Good evening. We're going to go ahead and get started. There's eight of nine board members present and anticipate the other board member coming in shortly, but we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And tonight, the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance is by Mr. McMillan.
Please face the flag. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a couple of announcements. The first one being that Ms. Coons is not able to be here tonight, our student rep, due to some other commitments. And the second one is that several of us will be attending the National School Board Association Annual Conference, April 6th through the 9th, in San Antonio, Texas, hoping to learn a lot and come back and share it with the district and our community. I see no elected officials here tonight. If you are, raise your hand. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to changes to the agenda.
Raise my hand.
Oh. Changes to the agenda. Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Next, Superintendent Thomas, your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just a few updates since we last met. One administrative appointment's been made since our last meeting. I have appointed Melinda Russell to serve as principal of AL Lotz Elementary School. Previously, she was serving as interim principal at the school, and prior to that, she served as assistant principal at Lotz. Melinda joined Knox County Schools in 2010 as a teacher upon graduating from Tuscaloosa College. She taught at Shenondale Elementary until 2015, until she was appointed assistant principal at the school she will now lead. The survey for our strategic plan closed at the end of the day on Thursday, March 22nd. All information gathered from it, our community input meetings, and one-on-one interviews with elected officials, and our business and educational leaders has been compiled and sent to Tim Young, who will analyze it for us in order to discern the focus areas of input for our community. We hope to have that information back from Tim by April 13 to begin working internally to round out the tactics that will drive the strategic plan. Congratulations to Jared Mueller, sixth grader at Cedar Bluff Middle School. He recently won the 2018 New Sentinel Southern Appalachia Regional Spelling Bee, outspelling 210 other students from across the region, including parts of Virginia. While he was runner-up in last year's competition, this year's first-place win means he will head to Washington, DC, for a chance at the Scripps National Spelling Bee. We're very proud of Jared and his accomplishments. There are lots of events coming up in April, including Dine Out for Education on April 10, the Teacher Tenure Celebration on April 17, from 5:30 to 7:30, at the Mill and Mine, and the Barney Thompson Scholarship Dinner, April 24, also 5:30 to 7:30, at Sarah Simpson Professional Development Center. Madam Chair, members of the board, this concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions of the superintendent regarding his report? None? Okay. Next, we'll have John Ryswick, Dr. Ryswick, concerning the Byington-Salway Career and Technical Education Center update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm going to kind of introduce this and then have Ms. Cheryl Hickman, and Keith Wilson is also here. So we have our secondary executive director and our director of career and tech education here to answer questions or help with this. But just to kind of intro this for you, part of what Superintendent Thomas asked us to do was to continue to look at programs, program evaluations. You've seen a lot of those recently, coming from our REA department. And Byington-Salway was one of those that we kind of took a look at about two years ago. Ms. Hickman will get into this some, but there was a proposal before this board to kind of pilot a change to open up some opportunities for some other schools to be able to access Byington. And, you know, we're looking back at that now, two years later, at the cost for that, as well as how successful we were in meeting some of those objectives at that time. And we'll let Ms. Hickman at this time kind of walk you through what it looks like and what our recommendation is for the future.
Let me get all this stuff together. Thank you, Madam Chairman. We're going to talk about Byington-Salway. And where I want to start is with a screen that you saw two years ago with the proposal for what we were going to do at Byington-Salway as of March 2016. So an idea was that we would expand the number of schools served from three to five, adding students from Farragut and Bearden to those who were already coming to Byington-Salway. We would start changing both the start and dismissal time to allow teachers to instruct four periods rather than three. We intended to restructure the master schedule so that juniors and seniors could participate more fully in any work-based learning opportunities. We intended to align programs of study with labor and market industry demands, and the last thing we wanted to do was strengthen industry partnerships so there would be seamless transitions. Now, that was our plan. So after a two-year pilot, we've been able to collect some information, and I can report to you how that plan has gone. I think this chart speaks for itself. This shows you a list of student enrollment at the schools over the last four years. And if you'll see, there's a marked decline. In 1415, we had 517 students enrolled at Byington-Salway. This year, well, 1718 last year, we had 384. And if you'll notice, I have placed on this chart the numbers from each of the different schools and how they have been impacted. I think what you notice most glaring on this particular chart is that the number of students from Karnes has decreased dramatically, and I'm going to be able to explain why that happened in just a moment as we go on to some of the next screens. Now, as far as enrollment, I wanted to give you an idea of the number of students who were enrolled in some classes. You may not have realized it, but we were offering math and English classes at Byington-Salway. And this is just indicative of the students who were enrolled in those classes for the past term. So what you'll see is those numbers are pretty low. And the last thing I think probably of most concern is we did have some students at Byington-Salway who weren't enrolled in any CTE courses at all. So after two years of looking at this plan that we thought might help, here are some of the conclusions that we've drawn. The cost of transportation has increased dramatically, so largely because we're now transporting students from both Farragut and Bearden to Byington-Salway, we saw marked increase. We saw additional staff costs because we added a math and English teacher, a counselor, a TA for ingenuity, and a college and career coach. We have master scheduling concerns. A new bell schedule did not match the bell schedule at Karnes High School. So if a Karnes High School student wanted to participate in a class, they were often forced to wait 30 to 45 minutes for that class to begin. So what they began to do was just make other choices. And then we saw that there were no increases in the work-based learning or industry partnerships. And remember, those were all the things we thought would be improved by making this particular kind of changes. So we came to some conclusions. We don't believe that we need an executive principal at Byington-Salway. Instead, we think an assistant principal that has been assigned to Karnes High School can be assigned to Byington-Salway. Math and English will no longer be provided at Byington-Salway. Rather, those courses will be offered at each of the base schools so students could take math and English at the school where they're enrolled. And that way, we can eliminate those two teaching positions. Farragut and Bearden students will no longer attend classes at Byington-Salway. First, you need to know that there are CTE classes at both of those schools. But if we have a student who wants to complete a program at Byington-Salway, we will allow that student to do so. And they can make one of two choices. They can provide their own transportation for just that class they need to be in attendance at Byington-Salway, or they can ask for a transfer. We oftentimes allow transfers for a program of study that's not offered at your own base school. So we will make allowances for those students who do want to complete a program of study at Byington-Salway. And then we are very hopeful that our number of Karnes High School students will increase because we'll be able to adjust the schedule more like it had been in the past. So if we do those things, we will realize these cost savings. The difference in the cost of an assistant principal and executive principal is over $21,000. An English DP, and DP means distinguished professional, that person's position is $5,000. One half-time math teacher was $23,000. The other half-time math teacher was $25,000. And remember, that's based on their amount of experience and all those other things that go into that. A counselor will save us over $52,000. A college and career counselor, who was funded largely by Perkins, will save $61,000. The cost of the buses will save us $30,000. So we think by making these changes, we will save an estimated $219,000. So, do I have any questions?
Ms. Fugit, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. My larger question, which I don't expect you to answer today.
Okay.
Is how are we, I mean, this is, so we're eliminating a lot of these services. And a month or so ago, we talked about the real need to get kids into programs like this. How do we propose to do that?
We still have CTE courses at all our high schools, all during the day. Those gentlemen who came last month to our board meeting really want to expand in our evening offerings, and we can do that.
I understand that, but I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Yes.
Pushing back because CTE is something that we have eliminated a lot of classes and a lot of programs in our high schools. I'm not saying we don't have it.
Yes.
But we don't have what we used to have years ago.
I agree.
And that's one of the criticisms we get about that's why there aren't enough kids going into those fields. So I just throw that out as a challenge. I understand that the number of students at that school may not warrant all this.
Yes.
But I challenge us to think about how do we make more robust offerings at schools, which I think would ultimately be more expensive if you start putting all these programs in all the different high schools.
Yes.
That's why we went for this model.
Yes.
So I just think it's a real struggle. Hopefully, as kids understand more of what their options are and that you can make a good living in these courses, that will help increase their desire to enroll in these. I don't know, it's just...
Well, I have full confidence in Keith Wilson, who is working to that very end that you've just mentioned. Isn't that right, Dr. Wilson?
I have no doubt. I just felt like that needed to be said.
Yes, and we agree with you.
That when we hear, on the one hand, we don't have enough people to do these kind of jobs, we, as the school system, have to figure out a way.
Yes.
To get them in them. Thank you.
Ms. DeFricke.
Thank you. I do agree with Ms. Fugit, but I also noticed that you said some of the students that were going to Byington-Salway weren't even taking CTE classes.
Yes.
So that's one concern I have. You bring them over.
And that was a very small number.
Okay.
And we wanted, we did not want that to be the case.
Right.
We felt like that while that building and that school exists is for CTE, and that needed to be our most pressing concern.
Okay. Well, the real question I was asking, since we're going to move to some of these teachers and counselors, are they going to be, are they going to be able to move in some of the other schools where we have vacancies that always occur every year?
We are working on that very thing.
Okay, okay, because I know we're lacking counselors.
Yes, we are.
And I know we have math and English, so that was my question.
And I know that some of these people have already had some interviews.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Ford. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Hickman, thank you for your presentation. So we do have, like at Farragut High School, and I'm sure also at Bearden, there are several offerings in CTE. I know we've heard, the board has heard from one parent of a child who was in the welding program at Byington-Salway. And obviously, that is not something that's offered at Farragut. And to Ms. Fugit's comment, you know, plumbing, welding, those types of skills we know are needed. Are there opportunities for, okay, two questions.
Okay.
One, for those students who are, will be juniors or seniors at Bearden and Farragut, they can finish the program that they've begun at Byington-Salway?
Yes, they can.
So they can provide their own transportation? And then what would they, would they only take, like, what would it look like? Would they only take that one class?
Well, it would really depend on their schedule. But if they are a junior or senior, they've had either one or two of the classes already. So they'd want to take a third, perhaps a fourth year, to finish that program. And hopefully, we could work to some, towards some industry certification as well.
Okay.
But it would really just depend on the master schedule, and I'm sure that the counselors from both schools, both Byington or Karnes now, and whichever school they're in, can work together to design a schedule for that student.
Okay. And work-based learning, are there opportunities that exist in these schools already for students to have work-based learning in areas that are outside of the CTE classes that are already offered in that school? In other words, plumbing is not offered at Farragut. Is there any opportunity for kids outside?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Wilson for that one. Dr. Wilson?
Does that question make sense?
It does. And so, and bear with me, because I may stumble through this a bit, but with work-based learning, essentially, I think every school has teachers that serve as a work-based learning coordinator that are trained to do that. And so a work-based learning placement should link back to a set of standards and a course that the student has completed. And certainly, if you're using it for that third or beyond credit in CTE, you've had those prerequisite courses. You mentioned plumbing specifically. There are some that are a little more challenging at times to get the placements in, but you can kind of work around them. And I'll give you an example. As long as you can make the links back to the standards in the course, conceivably, a Farragut student who had had fundamentals of construction and plumbing could take a work-based learning placement that would extend from that, and it might be in a supply warehouse, or it might be something like that. But when you get into some of the more, like welding and plumbing, the challenge of work-based learning, true work-based learning placements, is being able, based on the age of the kid and insurance requirements, for some of those types of jobs and facilities for them to get into those. It's a little easier if you're talking business and marketing and those sorts of classes to make those arrangements, but it can be challenging in some of the more hands-on. And that's being recognized. It's, those are areas we need to continue to work through issues in, in terms of making that work.
So essentially, if you don't have prerequisite classes, so going forward.
Yeah.
Assuming those kids don't have access to Byington-Salway. Going forward, then, if you don't have those, that program in place for them to get those prerequisites, then that's not going to be an opportunity for them unless they want to transfer.
Within that elective focus. So then when they choose a CTE elective focus and they complete at least three courses in a program of study, that would be true, that they couldn't, they couldn't just do a work-based learning placement in plumbing, separate from having done that elective focus leading up to it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. DeFricke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you tell us what CTE programs are currently offered at Byington-Salway? What programs are offered at Bearden and Farragut? And how those compare in course and in number to the Career Magnet Academy?
Unfortunately, off the top of my head, that would be a whole lot to remember in my short time. I can tell you that in comparison, the Bearden and Farragut offerings fall more into what I would say are more of your business and health science-aligned type courses, where the CTE facility that's built out at Byington was set up more for your welding, your construction core-type offerings. Again, the facility itself is kind of built around that work. The particular CMA, I know we do some dual enrollment and stuff around mechatronics, which is more like industrial maintenance, and they do that actually at the Pellicippi Lab. That would be a unique offering there that we would have. And we're building out a lab, we're supposed to be doing it in this current year, but still working through the procurement on that, but building out an electromechanical lab, very similar to what mechatronics is, where they learn industrial maintenance, factory maintenance is what that is in terms of product manufacturing. Your offerings at your Farragut and Bearden are more information technology, STEM, health sciences, what I would consider more of the academic track in CTE, if you will, versus more of your skills and trades side, which would be what you see more of at Byington.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Ms. Hickman, and thank you. Okay, Ms. Massey. Discipline policies and guidelines, feedback update. While they're getting set up.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Let me recognize, Councilwoman Stephanie Welch came in, I believe, so I wanted to recognize her as an elected official.
Yeah, that's the video.
And again, thank you, Ms. Hickman, for your work on that, and Dr. Ryswick. We appreciate the information.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So I'm here to kind of do an additional information piece from the presentation I did a few weeks ago about the information around the update for policy J-191 and the discipline guidelines and procedures and restorative practices. I will tell you that we sent out a staff survey to everyone. We had, you'll flip for me. We had 1,092 participants, and you can see the breakdown of, it was primarily teachers, but you can also see we had received feedback from many other folks, counselors, administrators, et cetera. But the primary folks who responded were classroom teachers, all right? We also disaggregated, there was a question about what board district that they were in, and that information is shared here, and you can see that we, just the participation spread, and then for people who chose not to answer or chose that they did not know, that was about 12.6%. So the next thing we asked, and we combined a couple of surveys that we had done, both with teachers in the smaller groups, as you may recall, we had asked every school to send two teachers that could represent their schools. They were, they were with Jeffrey Wright and Dr. Karen Loy. They spent a couple of hours together. The first part of that was really teaching the staff about the discipline guidelines, restorative practices, so there was an educational component of that. And from there, there was a lot of dialogue, and then finally, there was a survey that we sent to them that involved some discipline scenarios. So those scenarios were typical behaviors that we see currently in Knox County Schools, and then we gave them, if you see the responses, the first response would have been the things that we're doing right now, the discipline consequences, the discipline guidelines as they exist right now is the first one on each of the responses. The second one is the revised guidelines for numbers of days of suspension. The third one, which is in green, is a combination of the revised discipline guidelines and adding on restorative practices. And then the fourth one is just a minimal kind of consequence, less than what we are currently doing, but didn't involve either restorative practices or was different from our revised guidelines. So one of the things that we saw when we took a look at that survey was that it really, the sample group that we had with the teachers, the responses were very similar in nature, that the primary response was around restorative practice and the revised guidelines in combination. We also saw the same kinds of themes that we've seen when we've, I did the presentation before, and we've talked about, we've seen some things pretty consistently among all the stakeholders, and those include making sure that we are doing the right kinds of training, that we have staffing to support, that it's really important to everybody that we maintain order in our schools and our classrooms, and then making sure that we have appropriate buy-in for implementation. The next few graphs that you're going to see, we also took the graph of the stuff that we shared with different teachers and parents, and we've gotten that information and divided it into kind of some of the themes around school administrators. Is this beneficial? Would it help? So our main themes were school administrators, school culture, school achievement, student behavior, and teachers. And so when you look at those graphs, I've gone ahead and I'm just going to kind of give you a little summary as we go through all of the graphs. But you can see that the red and the kind of merry gold color are the disagree and strongly disagree. The gray is kind of neutral, and then purple and green sort of summarize that. And at the end, I'm going to kind of summarize the data around those themes for you orally. But this is, I'm sorry, go ahead. Some of the things that we saw, again, appropriate staffing, making sure that we're consistent and effective in the implementation, and I think every time we presented that, you know, we've talked about how important it is that we really implement with fidelity, accountability for students, and I think one of the things that I'll go back and emphasize is accountability for students has been a primary focus of this entire work, both accountability and the teaching, the learning. I think when you think about that PBIS video, Amy Bray said, when students have difficulty with math, we teach them math. When students have difficulty with managing their behavior, we teach what we expect with appropriate behavior. So that high accountability is there, but also with the expectation that our kids come to us with different skill sets, and that as educators, we have a responsibility to fill in those gaps. We've taught, there's a concern about teacher workload, and then just again, making sure that we're strictly enforcing discipline. This looks at whether or not we're going to, the adoption of these changes of behavior levels would be beneficial, and again, I'm going to compare all of those kind of summary, but you can see that we have a larger number of support. I'll just give you a couple of examples. If you add up, tally up those up for school administrators, the negative, strongly disagree and disagree is 17.8% versus a 51.4% for school administrators. Strongly disagree and disagree, 21% versus 51.2% for agree and strongly agree, 17.4 for student achievement and 48.5, 23.6 for student behavior and 50.5, and teachers for 24.7 and 45.8%. So overall, on every one of the things that we question teachers about or staff about, we saw, we saw responses across the board, but we saw more responses for either, for both strongly agree and agree. Again, trends about whether or not this would, adoption of the changes to the language would be important. Some of the things that we saw was teachers saw that the flexibility was good, they felt like more training was needed. I will remind you that, again, this group did not have the benefit of Dr. Loy and Jeffrey Wright kind of explaining that. So if you just read that without some instruction, which we, of course, would provide to. So if you just read that without some instruction, which we of course would provide to anybody that was implementing, it might be, it's obviously going to be more difficult to kind of figure out how to manage that, but we have a very robust training plan. And then just making sure, again, that student accountability piece. Going to the next thing, changes in the policy would be beneficial. You can see where, again, same kind of, charts all look very similar, we're stronger in our strongly agree and strongly disagree, I mean strongly agree and agree versus our strongly disagree and disagree. Let's go to the next comment. This slide, this is kind of the summary of the Knox County School Student Support Guidelines will be utilized in behavior consequences, and it's about adopting that. There was a lot, there were a lot of comments about, and you can see, we've tried to provide each slide, what kinds of comments really tied to that specific. People had the opportunity to respond to every prompt with some comments. Administrators need to be committed, student discipline history has to be considered. There were a couple of themes that we tried to, and Dr. Loy, I'll have to give her credit because she went through all of these many comments to kind of categorize those, but that was a really important thing, that people wanted to make sure that we thought about the discipline history of students when we were making decisions. It could have negative consequences there, and we've talked about some of the concerns around that, the need for additional resource, and just making sure that we're thinking about all students in the process, both of those students that are doing the things that they need to be doing and that we're still reinforcing and recognizing those student behaviors as well. Adoption of the proposed behavior definitions would be beneficial. Again, you can see the same kind of pattern with the data. And then one of the things it talked about when we looked at themes is that we need the definitions to be clear, they really need to be enforced, and they need to be reader and user-friendly. So when you think about our overall, you know, we gave an open-ended response, what challenges can you foresee? And you can see, again, I talked, when I first started talking tonight, about that same pattern that we've seen, the concern about the need for training, the need for buy-in, making sure that we are consistent, and then parent involvement. And again, we have trainings, and I say we, a lot of that's Mr. Wright, but he's done a lot to prepare trainings for all different stakeholders. That common language and expectations, making sure everybody understands that we have a district language and that we're recognizing and supporting that growth, just like we would any other curriculum that we're using. All right, we have a short video, I want to give a big shout-out to Prentice Elliott, who is amazing. See, back there somewhere, wave at his Prentice. He is amazing, he's done a really, he just did the PBIS video, he's done one around restorative practices that I want to share with you today, but before we do that, Mr. Brown, and come on down. He has a teacher with him. I think one of the things Ms. Roundtree has shared is that some of the work that's gone on at South Dole, and this has been one of our, I guess, bright spots, and so just wanted to give you an opportunity to talk with an administrator and a teacher who've seen a lot of positive results and have been through the growing pain process, so I'm going to turn it over to them.
Ms. Roundtree.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I just wanted the board to know, I had specifically talked to Missy after the policy review meeting and asked her if she would invite Mr. Brown and some teachers to come and talk at our meeting tonight, to share sort of what they've experienced at South Dole Middle, because I think there definitely have been, I mean, if y'all know Andrew, he's a wonderful principal, but he is a straight shooter, and he has worked, he and his staff have worked very hard to change the culture at South Dole Middle, and so I think that he's, you know, he and Ms. Davis are not going to tell you everything's rainbows and unicorns, there have been growing pains, but, I mean, having been in the school myself, some of you all heard me share about a student I talked with, just the metacognition and awareness she's developed around her own behavior and maybe why a certain response would not be appropriate within the school setting, and hearing her share that and being able to articulate that to me. I didn't go, and if y'all are in at the policy review meeting, I didn't go to grill this child about PBIS, I was actually working with her and talking to her about being, you know, just reading and sort of asking some questions about being a struggling reader and this sort of, her own experience with PBIS and sort of restorative practice was just part of that conversation, so just thank you guys for being here, I really appreciate it.
Sure, and I don't want to say a whole, I've spoken to you all before at the board retreat, and I think you know how I feel about restorative practices and being the right thing for kids. We have seen a lot of growth, it has not been a freshly paved interstate, it's kind of been more like a backcountry road. We've definitely had some bumps, and I think a lot of that just has to do with our lack of ability or really timeliness with school and with our daily routine to be able to properly train teachers and really give them probably the background knowledge. As I said to you all before, I really feel like that restorative practices, more than anything, is a change, it's a paradigm shift, it's a change in the way we approach things, it's teachers' understanding that there's student accountability, but it doesn't have to be punitive all the time, that it is a learning experience. And so I really asked Ms. Martin, who's one of our sixth-grade ELA teachers, who has worked with our restorative interventionists quite a bit, and how she's trying to transform and change some things in her classroom. As Ms. Roundtree mentioned about me, Ms. Martin is very forthcoming and is going to be honest. She's probably had positive and probably some negative experiences, so it's not all been great, but I got to tell you, overall, as we watch this video, they actually came and interviewed some of our students, and to see the change in individuals, and that's really, I think, where the difference happens. In order to see a global change, you have to start with individuals, and we have individual kids who are changing the way they approach things and the way they look at their decision-making when it comes to their behavior and how they handle themselves in the classroom. So I'll let Ms. Martin tell you a little bit about what she's done in her classroom, and then of course, if you guys have any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer them.
Mr. McCarter is our restorative practice teacher, and I asked him to come to one of my classes to help me out with some, I had a lot of kids speaking out in class, they didn't want to wait their turn, they were, they just were walking all over each other or talking all over each other. And he came, and he came in and he sat with them, and I don't think I even realized the impact restorative practices could have until I watched this class transform. It's a class of 28 kids, it is, it can be, it had, this class specifically has lots of challenges, but they're really good kids and they want to share. Part of their problem was they didn't understand how to share, and what I was saying to them wasn't getting through to them. So he went through a whole restorative practice where we talked about respect, and it really had an impact on them that day, the next day, and the next day after that. So I started talking to Mr. McCarter about what are some ways that I can continue doing this, because I want this class to continue having opportunities to speak and to continue with what they're doing. And so all four of my classes, I actually have started where at the beginning of the class, I try to do this at least three times a week, where I propose one to two questions, which is part of the restorative practice, and they get a voice, they get to hear their own individual voice. It's not me saying, I want you to think about this a little bit more, it's not me saying that's the wrong answer, that's the right answer. They are getting to have a voice, and it's being heard, and it's being heard by not just me, but by a whole class. And I think that some of the things that our kids really need, they need someone to hear their voice. One of the things that I wish I had is more training. I have not had the opportunity to go to Mr. Wright's training, we did have a whole group of people go, I wasn't one of the ones, but I'm also one of the ones that if I want to know something, I'm going to go find out. But I do think teachers want more training, and I've talked to a lot of our teachers at our school, that is hands-down, it's not that they're not buying in, they do see how this can be a benefit, but they want training. And the other thing we need, we have one restorative practice teacher, and it can overwhelm him. When you have a school with students that have challenges, more than one restorative practice guy would be really wonderful to have. He's kept pretty busy, he's, he has a pretty tight schedule, and that's not to say if we don't, if I don't email him, he doesn't come. I usually see him by the end of the day, and he'll say, let me put you on my schedule. But it needs, we need more training, and it would be really nice if we had more help with it, with the staff. I don't know.
And just to piggyback off of what she said, we started the year, we were excited when we found out that Ms. Massey was going to give us a restorative interventionist for the school year. However, as you all know, that was kind of a transformation of what used to be our in-school suspension, and so, and it really got confusing in my building because the guy who used to do in-school suspension was now also our restorative interventionist. So our teachers had already in their mind that this is what he does, he's in school. So Mr. McCarter and I started the year with a great plan about how he was going to run these discipline reports, we're going to look at these kids who had been our high flyers in the past, and we're going to be proactive with them, and we were going to begin by sitting down with them, talking about behaviors, talking about decision-making and those kind of things, get them off on the right foot. The problem is, as the school starts, and one of the first things we had to do is, he had to go to all the trainings with Mr. Wright, and then by the time he got, after that first week of school, your kids had gotten settled back in, and they were starting to be disruption in class. So before he could be proactive and reach out to those kids, some of those kids, he was already getting emails about, I need you to come and talk to this child or talk to this child, and next thing you know, he turns into an in-school suspension teacher. And so as Ms. Martin said, we could really use more people to do this, you almost need to run a program, and so we did, we made some changes on the fly, and we were able to hire an additional person with some school funds and in line with our school plan to address behavior concerns. So we have a person now who's a behavior assistant, who can be that person that can manage students when they need to, you know, sometimes kids just need to come out of classroom in it to have that timeout, to have that in school, whether it's for a period or for an entire day. And so we have a person that does that, and then we have Mr. McCarter, who then has the ability to go and be more proactive. And so as Ms. Martin said, we, it does work, it just, the timing of it, and that was one of the bumps that we ran into. It's hard to be proactive when kids are in the building and now you're having to react. So that was one of the shifts we kind of had to make as school started.
Ms. Higman.
Thank you, just a couple of questions. First question, not about the program, I think that, I've heard about that for quite a while, I fully understand what we're doing, my question would be, Mr. Thomas, is this also part of a strategy in any way with school security? Do we think that these kind of things improve school security, the children, the students being heard, all that kind of thing? I just think that I'd like to see that that kind of works hand-in-hand, and that we think much more globally about school security and school safety beyond locks and those type things, and if restorative practices gets to some kids, I just, I mean, is that part of your strategy, you think that helps, or?
Absolutely, I believe it does in terms of behavior as going to help, I think, with security, because you should have fewer fights, I would think, and things that could generally just disrupt the whole.
Well, and that could escalate, is what I'm thinking. And if it would help our, you know, one of the things that we see oftentimes when these students do these horrible things, they feel very disenfranchised in their school, and so I'm wondering if this would also be a help, and, Mr. Brown, do you want to speak to that?
Well, or Ms. Martin may be able to say that, but I have to say, at the core of all of this is building community, and what Ms. Martin talked about in those circles and sitting down, not just do students feel like they have voice, I think, you know, they feel like they're being heard, and they also become more empathetic toward each other's needs. I can't tell you the number of conferences that I've been a part of where students have broken down in tears when they realize how their actions impacted someone else, whether it's a teacher or another student. I do think, when this was first all presented to me, I think that this could be the most powerful thing to truly stop bullying that we've ever seen, because when those students see how it impacts somebody else, you know, nobody wants to mistreat somebody else at our core, I mean, we're all human beings.
And that's why I'm elevating the conversation to think about it in a larger framework, because I think if our teachers, faculty, everybody really understood that this was also a tool toward eliminating some of the situations in school buildings that make children, students, then feel hopeless, that lead to horrible outcomes, that is a good thing. So that's one, that's more just a soapbox, I'll climb back off of it. And now, Missy, my question for you is a methodology about the district representation slide. How did you glean that information about people, what district people answered from? Was that a self-report, or did we track what computer it came from?
Oh no, that was a self-report, and there was an opportunity for them to say, prefer not to answer.
I just want us to be very clear about that, because there, that has been something that has been brought up many times, and I just want all our staff and everybody to understand that that is not, you filled it out at your school and we tracked it back, people self-identified what district they were answering from. I assume since there was not known people, it was self-reported.
Right, they could say prefer not to answer.
But I just wanted to be clear about that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question about, I'm sorry, wrote my question down here, regarding the, for Ms. Martin, I know you're trying, I know you're trying to hide back there, I got to work with Ms. Martin with our Wonder Project on the Big Read, and she's a great, great ELA teacher. Just, could you speak to, if you know, like, once you started implementing those practices in your classroom, did you see kids become more engaged in the content?
Oh yeah, my, ELA is not everybody's favorite thing in the whole wide world, part of it's because, the reading, part of it's because of the writing, but most of my kids, I can say, bought in, so to speak, that they were buying in what I was giving them or selling them. They like to have that voice, and one of the things, they started sharing with me, and some of the questions that I use with them periodically through the week aren't hard. We had those snow days, and I asked them, what was one thing you liked about your snow day, what was one thing you didn't like about your snow day? And you get a lot of different responses. Of course, I didn't have to go to school, I got to play in the snow. Some of the things that I got from, I don't like a snow day, one particular student told me, she said she had to forcibly bond with her parents and she hated it. But you learn things like that, and it helps build those relationships, and I would not, I would not be building those same relationships with these students if I weren't asking these questions. One student this week has particularly had a really rough time since spring break, and I've been trying to engage him and have a conversation, and he finally broke down and told me, he said, I feel like I'm not having a voice right now. And so I've had to step back, and I asked him to step back, and I said, I want you to think about how you can, how we can give you a voice, more of a voice in my classroom, because he was really feeling like his voice wasn't being heard. And so that's his homework tonight, is to figure out how he wants to have his voice heard in my class. So I don't think I would have those relationships where my kids would share this stuff with me without that restorative practice, without me being, having known about this strategy of asking simple questions at the beginning of the class, where everybody gets to have a voice, your answer isn't wrong, your answer isn't right, because a lot of times in school, that's what it's about. You either have a right answer or you have a wrong answer, and that's what the kids see. It's also allowed me to do, just, just coming into the classroom, one of the things we do is we stand at our door, but a lot of times I get caught because the kids want to share more with me, and they want to share with me as they come in, I want to tell you this, I want to tell you this, and I get caught, and I get traffic jams, and that has eliminated those traffic jams, because they know once they come into my classroom, they're going to have a voice immediately, where they get to share something that they want to share. And some kids just don't get to share, they don't like to share, or maybe they can't, they don't, they're not the one that's going to raise their hand during class when we're discussing what theme is, and they're not going to raise their hand, and they don't want to be called on, or if you do call on them, even if they don't raise their hand, they don't think they have the answer, and it makes them very nervous. But this format, they're very But this format, they're very comfortable in sharing. And I think that has built those relationships and because it has built it, I spend less time on discipline problems in the classroom. That doesn't, that's not to say they don't arise. There's always challenging times in the classroom. Spring break happens to be one of them before and after. But they're less, they have been less than last year. And I, I really do think it's because of that restorative practice that I have put into place, just with those simple questions. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Do you think it has helped you, just hearing you talk about that and having seen it in practice and in classrooms at the middle school? Do you think it's helped you and other teachers with differentiation as well? Being able to, you know, glean that extra information and build that relationship with the students?
Yes, because my class that, because I do teach, I, I have all, I have honors all the way to my co-talk class. So, I strive to get my kids on all areas and all, you know, I want them all riding here. And they know that and they're willing to accept that and they're willing to try it. I do have to, of course, do some scaffolding for all the classes, but they're more willing to try the scaffolding. And they're also more willing to try when I give them a challenging task and say, I'm, I'm stepping up the rigor a little bit, let's try it. And then they open up and they try it. They're not willing to go, I can't do that, I'm just not going to do that. Because they know I'm, I'll, I'll hear them, I'll listen to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Horn, I believe you were next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It seems like, Martin, Ms. Martin, don't go too far. It seems like going back to the slides that Ms. Massey showed with when teachers responded to the, to those scenarios and it seemed like there was a lot of agreement. And it seemed like when you got into, when we looked at comments, that's where there's a lot of concern. So, can you talk a little bit about, and you, about how you, how that time factor is for you as a teacher? Because I think a lot of people are worried, a lot of teachers are worried that this is going to take away from their teaching time, that they're going to, it's going to be very time-consuming in addition to, in addition to, I think there's a lot of concern about just discipline in the classroom. So, if you could talk a little bit about, and you've already touched on those, but if you could just talk a little bit more and also in that, when do you, as a teacher, handle something and then when do you call in your Mr. McCarter to help with that?
Okay. I'm not sure with the time, I can, I think of, I can think of a lot of, just to do the questioning, it doesn't take that long. It can take around five to eight minutes, depending on how many questions I ask. I don't consider that wasted time because my discipline goes down. And it, it, because it goes down, I get more teaching time in the classroom just by using up those eight minutes. As far as time goes, sitting down with a student, having a conversation with a student during restorative practice, I try to do it right then. Even if, I don't want to lose that time and it depends on the situation too. Sometimes a student needs a cool-off time. Sometimes they need me to address the problem right then. So, I have to kind of gauge what's best for that student. I don't, it doesn't really take that much of my time. I, I, because I, that's a hard, it is time, it can be time-consuming. I think if you start getting teachers and start pulling teachers into every, a restorative circle, every time they have a conflict with a student, there is going to be a time problem. We, I don't have, I don't do that though. With Mr. McCarter, I call him in when I need him, when there, I'm really struggling to overcome this problem myself. Like with the class that was just being disrespectful, they were being disrespectful to each other and it took him 30 minutes to go through a restorative practice. So, yes, as a, as a time strain, if a teacher gets called in because they're having a conflict with a student, every time they have a conflict, that, that could start getting, costly with time. As, as far as that list I saw that she put up there, the list of concerns, check, 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 check. It, it, it is a problem. And I don't know how to address all of them. I do know we could use some more people at our school to do it, to do it effectively. If you're going to do it, I always say, do it right the first time and not keep putting a patch on something. I thought about, is it Ms. Fugit? When she, she mentioned about the police officers and I was like, gosh, I didn't think of it that way. But it might resolve some of those things that we're concerned about because some of these kids just don't know how to have a voice. They don't know how. And nobody's there teaching them how to have a voice in an appropriate way. And I think the restorative practices does that. Does that answer your question? Is that all of it?
Yeah, I believe so. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hill.
Mr. Brown, I was interested when you were talking about the, the role of your restorative practice person. And I, I have heard what you echoed that in some schools, either because it was the same person that was the old ISS person and, and playing catch-up and then getting teachers to readjust their thinking and students that when they see this person or go to this person, it's not ISS anymore. And I'm very curious about this other person that you brought in. What, so are, are they based in the restorative classroom? Are, are, is that, is it a full-time person and is that who students go to when they have to be more confined?
Yes.
So, your restorative practice person actually can go into classrooms and do direct interventions with classrooms?
Yes, we, we actually use some of our title funds, we're a Title I school. So, we use some of our title funds to support, because one of our school plan goals is to increase behavior and disparities in line with our, with our system-wide goals. And so, we, we recognize the need, we were able to make some budget. We met with our team and allocated some budget so that we could hire an assistant and that person stays all day in the room where we, we have our, we call the Restorative Learning Center. But we really are, we're working on the setup and I'm working with Mr. McCarter and Mr. Mathis, who's the other guy that we hired, to, to have kind of, in that space, place where we can have circle time and where we can have just as needed, but also that area where students can come when they need to be removed from the classroom. That's, the majority now is, what it's used for is just for that. And most of the time, Mr. McCarter, our interventionist, is going into classrooms like with Ms. Martin in addressing, you know, global situations within that classroom. And that's happened with many teachers. And then, of course, he, he deals with individual situations and a lot of what he does is the restoration on the backend. When a student has had a discipline issue and there's, let's say there's been a fight and there's still a consequence for that, you know, we can't, if we just tell everybody to kiss and make up, then, you know, middle schoolers especially will just say, well, we got a free rein to fight. And so, there has to be a consequence. And so, we do a suspension and when they come back from that suspension then, then we sit down and we say, all right, let's talk about, because the suspension is not going to fix the problem. Whatever reason caused them to get into a fight needs to be resolved. Now, they, you know, they, they need to know that you can't fight and that's not acceptable because if you go out here as an adult and fight, you're going to get arrested. That's not okay. But we want to solve the root of that problem. I may have shared with you all, the first day of school, we had two, two boys who, you know, half-day, they get in a fight and, and the teacher and Mr. McCarter came to me and he said, okay, we just had a fight, what are we going to do? And I said, well, we need to, you know, let's figure out what it is. And, and they, you know, because we were all at that point, do we suspend them? Do we have a restorative conference? What do we do? And I said, well, let's, you know, let's, we got the boys together and we got to the bottom of the, they were brand-new sixth graders, we didn't know either one of them, but they had had some issues in, in elementary school. And one of them thought they didn't like the other one, the other one thought he didn't like him. And so, by the time we got done with the conversation, they were able to work that out. They went back, they apologized to their class and their teacher. And that teacher said, it transformed my classroom. Because again, they felt like, you know, we can be open and we can be honest and we can talk about whatever problems we may have and work those things out without getting to a fight.
Can you give a, an estimate then on what percentage of the day that your restorative person actually gets to, gets to go into classrooms, spends with teachers in classrooms?
He, he does it all day long.
All day.
Whether he, whether he's going into a classroom or he, he's pulling an individual student or a group of students to have a conference where, you know, because often they may not be in the same classroom, but we had an issue and so, now he's going to pull them and address that issue and try to get to the root of it. So, he literally, from the time he gets there until the time he leaves in the afternoon, is, is doing that all day long.
Okay. Oh, I think this.
Could I ask a follow-up question if you don't mind?
Is that okay?
Is that okay, Ms. Owen?
Okay.
Thank you. As a follow-up, because when I was reading through this, one of the things that came to mind was an indecisiveness. And you mentioned that on the, the example with the first day of school.
Sure.
That as this transformation and paradigm shift takes place, that there could be opportunity for that, for teachers and administrators to just be indecisive on how, how they know how to issue, how they address an issue. So, and you may want to speak to, someone else may want to speak to this, but can you just speak to that point about just kind of, in that, do you think that there will be times when administrators are indecisive?
So, I, and Ms. Massey, may I want to answer this question rather than letting me answer? But one of the things that I noticed in, in some of the concerns was administrator, it was either, you know, buy-in or fidelity of implementation is one of the concerns that were bulleted down there. And, and I would say, just like it is with anything, what happens in a, in a building is going to depend on the leader of that building. And so, when it, when, when you come to those crossroads and someone has to make a call, like, what do we do here? Are we going to suspend this kid? Are we going to do a restorative conference? How are we going to handle this? It's going to be the decision-making of the leader of that building. And again, I, I feel the same way with, with what happens with the teachers in that building. If, if, you know, the, the teachers are, are being trained and they're being encouraged and they're being supported to, to take a certain route, I feel like teachers then are more open to try new things and to be open to, to having that mindset change. I will also say, you know, from my understanding of Policy J 191, one of the caveats, just like it is in most things, is ultimately it gives the administrator the flexibility to do what they think is right in that building. At this moment, I, I think that the best thing for what we're doing at Southville Middle School is to implement restorative practices. That's not to say, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I did a disciplinary hearing today for a student and suspended them for the rest of the year and they're going to an alternative school. So, this is not the magic bullet. There are always going to be that percentage of student that, that it doesn't work for. But if I had to say in my entire building of over a thousand students, and we have looked at this, those repeat people who continually have behavioral issues, we're talking about around 50 students. So, that's a small percentage when you look at a thousand students who it's not working for. And then we, you know, we handle those individually.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree that we should focus on doing something right the first time and not try to put a bandage on it later. And though I appreciate the updates on restorative practices, this is not what the meat of the Discipline Policy J 191 is. This is not the meat of the proposed changes. This is a redirection of our attention away from the actual proposed policy changes. What we are supposed to be considering are the changes to the written policy, not whether to implement restorative practices. We've already voted on that. We already voted positively for that. So, I want to be really clear so that the community understands that, and, and I'm sure most people in this room agree that what we've heard tonight, we probably mostly agree with. This is something that we should do. It's also something we've already voted for. So, this is not the policy change that's listed in our agenda. When we are looking at the policy changes and the guidelines, we are looking specifically at J 191. And restorative practices are a very, very small piece of that. So, I don't want the community to feel that, that this is what we are voting on because that would be, that would just be a lie. And I think it's very important when we have an agenda, that our agenda accurately reflects what we are discussing. Because right now, it doesn't. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any other questions or comments? Ms. Dethridge, and then we'll come to Mr. Norman.
This is not a voting meeting, nor is it a work session. It's for information. So, I appreciate you coming out and giving us more information so that we can decide on what we're going to do with 191. That's the first thing. Second thing, Missy, we're doing PBIS and restorative practice. Can you just tell us once again what's the difference between those two and how they work together?
I'm going to let Jeffrey Ryan answer that question for you.
How they are interrelated and how, and as far as our students?
Right. Well, PBIS is a framework that teaches behavior, right? It has a tiered model of behavior that starts with teaching the behavior, acknowledging the behavior, reinforcing the behavior, and it works in a tiered model. Understanding that at the, at the universal level, not every kid's going to get it. Some kids are going to need a little more and then a little more and move up. Restorative practices are kind of a broad framework that really emphasizes that, like Ms. Martin said, building that community and the, building relationships in a classroom and, and focusing more on some, maybe some more positive sides of behavior, getting away from, from negative things. In the trainings that we do, we'll work with, with schools to kind of, I feel like that's one of my jobs is always to mesh those two in the training. I'm doing restorative practice or we're doing PBIS training or crisis intervention training to always have the posters up of all the different, you know, different things and show them how they can use restorative circles to teach academics and to teach the, the behavior expectations in the classrooms. So, sorry.
Okay. I'm glad, I guess, and so, when we have to work with the students, the teacher?
Yes, ma'am.
Not her name, I'm sorry.
Ms. Martin.
Ms. Martin. So, when, you say you haven't had the training yet, so I don't know exactly how far we are as far as getting everybody trained. But when you have students that are, as you start working with them with restorative practices and PBIS, you get to know them a little bit better and they get to understand you a little better.
Yes.
And so, that helps also as far as when you want to help or listen to them, you listen to them with an ear of understanding because you're understanding the whole child.
Yes.
So, in that regard, so, so the student appreciates you as well as you appreciate the student and it works better in the classroom?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Over time, so as, as time goes from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, you see a drastic difference in not only you and them, I mean, you understanding them, but them understanding you as well?
Yes, I would, yes, I would say that, yes. I didn't, the, the question didn't come, the idea of the question didn't come until after Mr. McCarter had come to my class. And he came to my class probably around October or November and I started using it and I started seeing changes. It wasn't a quick change, it was a slow change where they realized, I am hearing them. Because only one child gets to speak at a time and it's not a, nobody gets to interfere with their answer. They don't get to say, well, I think my answer's better or your answer's. They give their answer and then they pass, we use a pen, we pass the pen to the next person and that person answers the same question. So, only their voice is being heard for those few seconds. And like I said, it, it took a little bit of time. It, it wasn't a magic bullet or anything. I don't want, I don't want anybody to think it's a magic bullet because it does take a little bit of time. And it, it, I didn't speak, I just proposed the question and oftentimes I would answer the question myself. You know, I would tell the kids what I did on a snow day or what I did over spring break or what was my favorite food or what, another one I did was, what was the most interesting food you ate? So, I, I would share those things with them.
And, and as they understand you as the teacher, it gets a lot more respect for you and therefore you can teach them a whole lot easier.
Yes, because I participate in the circle too. Yes, I'm posing the question, but I answer the question also.
But Missy, what percent do we have left as far as training, the teachers? Do you know?
I don't have a percentage of number of teachers.
Okay.
I think we trained over 500 some teachers this past summer.
So, you're getting, I know, you're getting closer, but we have, do we have a timeframe as when we're trying to reach and have it?
Top of my head, I think it's 13 schools that have not sent a team to a training, I think.
Okay.
I feel pretty confident that's the number.
And as I mentioned the last time, one of the things that we plan to do is we're going to bring restorative practice trainers here to certify some trainers in several of our schools. We will not have enough funds to do that for all of our schools, but we, we have a long-term plan to do. we have a long-term plan to do that over the next couple of years.
It sounds like it's working and I just want to know how, how fast we get it to the others.
We would like to get everybody trained as quickly as possible as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I think I, I do want to, I do want to emphasize, although I'm, 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 we're not trying to deflect, I think restorative practices is a big crux of, when you look at the red line language of the, of the, um, not the red line, but the consequences will be assigned with consideration of each child's past experiences. In the schools where training has been completed, the use of restorative practices shall be used to the greatest extent possible. And that we're talking about adopting the Knox County Schools Student Guidelines to be utilized in addressing discipline consequences. So that's removing all of the previous level behavior and replacing it with the new guidelines, which will, in most cases, reduce some of the numbers of days of suspensions through those guidelines. Again, an important thing to emphasize is what Mr. Brown said, understanding that the principal, as they do now, will always have the prerogative to increase or quite frankly, decrease those days, based on the past experiences of the students. And that that whole, you know, when you look at those guidelines, that is all about where are we in the implementation of restorative practices at any level. So I, I mean, although, um, we are definitely talking about J one ninety-one, I don't know how we could separate those and not provide you with the information, um, so that you will be able to have a good understanding about what you're considering for our district.
We have two more, Mr. Norman and then Mr. McMillan. Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Ms. Massey, I guess first question's for you.
Yes, sir.
When we're talking about the survey, the original survey, uh, what was the total number of teachers that responded?
Seven hundred and, I think seven hundred and ninety, we, seven ninety-three.
Okay.
I talked with REA to talk about statistically, what, what would be statisti- statisti- statistically representative of our district? And they said, we are far beyond having an appropriate statistical representation. Seven thirty-nine, not seven ninety-three. I transposed my number, sorry.
So that's out of how many teachers?
Um, maybe four thousand. Is that, is that an accurate number, Mr. Norman?
Probably about thirty-eight hundred something.
Thirty-eight hundred.
So that's statistically significant according to the research department.
That is, yeah, that is correct. I do not have that area of expertise, so I consulted with them. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, um, obviously you were in the policy meeting.
I was.
We had quite a discussion in the policy meeting. Um, I guess the, and then in terms of survey, of course, in that discussion, my primary request was I wanted teachers, I wanted to direct, some kind of direct question from teachers in response, such as, do you think this is working and should we go ahead and fund this? Now, and I recognize, uh, the contention that, you know, that we've already voted on this, but we're also in a period of time where we're going to vote on a budget.
Sure.
And we're going to have to make some hard decisions about some things.
Yes, sir.
And it is, um, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm yet, I think that the jury is still out on the effectiveness of this in a broad sense. I think in certainly, in certain situations, there are positive effects, but we, just, just like anything, we have dollars, a limited number of dollars to do this with. Now, it's kind of assumed that it's going to be all the way across the board, all over the county, everywhere, every teacher, every classroom, that kind of thing. I'm still yet to, uh, you know, we've got to decide about, about that. And I think possibly that might be a stretch in terms of our budget. Nevertheless, um, that's enough for you.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Brown, um, describe again, describe again. So basically what I'm hearing is that you have a restorative practice thing going on, but you also have basically an in-school suspension for some time, uh, for some people at some times during the day.
We do, yes.
Okay.
Whether that need to be for one period or an entire day, a half day, whatever it needs to be. However, I think the big difference, whereas in the past, in-school suspension was purely punitive. You did this, you got one day of this. We are, now we have a reflection sheet that we use in our, in our restorative learning center, ISS, whatever you want to refer to it as, uh, where our students still, even though they needed that timeout to cool off or whatever, um, they have a chance to reflect on what was my behavior, you know, how, how, what could I have done differently? How did this impact others? So it's still going back to those restorative questions and giving them a chance to look at the behavior that landed them in the restorative learning center and how they can avoid going back in the future.
Okay. And you were talking about from your, from your school population of a thousand, you've got about fifty or fifty-five kids that are tending to be kind of recycled through these processes. Um, so talk about that fifty or fifty-five.
So what we do is, just like, uh, Mr. Wright talked about a, a tiered response with PBIS, you know, that just our normal teaching expectations reaches about eighty-five percent of the kids. There's a smaller percent that, that have what we call tier two and they may need like a check-in, check-out system. The same thing applies for, um, for our, our students when we look at restorative practices. Um, the majority of Ms. Martin's students can sit down in a classroom and have a circle and, and discuss and that works for them. There may be a handful that are going to continue to talk out and be disrespectful and that's where those fifty-five come from. And again, their behaviors are across the board. Some of them are classroom disruptions. Some, you know, we got some kids who just really like to fight. That's, you know, something they like to do. It's middle school. Um, you know, we have some that like to use foul language. So what we have done, uh, in addition to, uh, trying to handle things maybe a little differently and look at things for, through a different lens, uh, we have also rather than, uh, you know, basically you have two types of behavior. You have minor things which, you know, uh, in our current disciplinary procedures would be those level one and level two things. Most of the time, teachers handle those. It'd be, you know, talking out in class and cheating and, and just classroom-type problems versus larger things like fights and, you know, your zero tolerance and on up the chain. Uh, so what we have done in those minor categories is we have asked teachers, we have a minor discipline log. And as, as students do certain things, they log that behavior. So then when we begin to track and to see, and we actually, what we did is we aligned ours with our, our school-wide expectations for behavior in PBIS. So was this student doing something that might not be respectful or responsible or safe? And those are the, the three things that we categorize those in. And so when we start to see that a student has a pattern of behavior of not being safe, then we know specifically how we can address that student's needs. And, and again, that may be with a restorative conference, um, that may be, uh, you know, with, with some other kind of intervention and that would, that would take them. And then again, there's a small percentage of those students who don't respond. And when we have time and time and time again of minor things, major things, you know, we, we may spend and, and working backwards in that, in that discipline log. So each time someone has entered into the discipline log, the first one is, you know, the, the consequence for that action is a phone call to the parent, which each one of them include a phone call to the parent and maybe a conversation with the teacher. The second time that behavior happens, they may go see the school counselor. The third time, they may talk to our behavioral interventionist. The fourth time, they may meet with the restorative interventionist. Uh, the fifth time, they meet with just another teacher in the building. Maybe it's a seventh grader who had a really good relationship with the sixth grade. So they get to go to a, a preferred adult and talk about what they did. And maybe that person, because of the relationship they have built, is able to change that behavior. So it's not until like the eighth or ninth time that, that that student has had a repeat behavior of talking out in class or, like I said, we, we even tried to group similar behaviors into those expectations. So let's say they had eight instances where they, they have not been respectful. At that point in time, we would say, all right, this rises to the level of a major infraction and you may have to spend an entire day in that, that restorative learning center. And then they're able to be more reflective and, and fill out their reflection sheet, have another conversation with, you know, our, our restorative learning center assistant who's, uh, down there, who's, who, again, the relationships he's building have made a big, big difference. So it just, again, it depends from child to child, but we try to, you know, increase the response each time and, and intervene and then be able to show, if, if a child continues to exhibit these behaviors, then we, we can show, look, we've tried this and this and this and this and this. And we don't have any other option this, at this point in time, but maybe to do a suspension or to look at a, a longer-term suspension. Then we go through that, um, progressive discipline that we have always had in, in our discipline policy.
Okay. And, and I appreciate that. And I'm glad that there's this graduated scale, so to speak, that you're keeping, keeping up with. Certainly my, you know, my concern a lot of times in this is, uh, that we make sure that we're, we're doing everything that we can for the teacher and the kids in the room that are behaving. And we're not spending an inordinate amount of time and, uh, finances on the kids that aren't. And so, and, and you're identifying some situations also, obviously with the alternative school thing, this reached a point where he had to go. And there are serious things. There are serious emotional, psychological things that are going on inside these kids that we just, in the normal classroom, in the normal school setting, we are jeopardizing a whole lot of people for something that should be taken care of very quickly. And I hope that we're identifying that. I hope we're concerned and careful that we can identify these. It doesn't take twelve. It doesn't take nine.
No.
I mean, these are, these are serious conditions.
And I can tell you that the situation that I had today was not a culmination of events. It was a single standalone. This child did one thing and it rose to that level that, that we said, that's not acceptable.
Sure.
Um, they're, they're one action. I had, had another disciplinary hearing today where a student had in the neighborhood of eighty behavior logs throughout the school year and forty-five or forty-six major discipline referrals to the office. Um, so it was two totally different situations. And of course, we had different outcomes.
Okay.
But, but yeah, there, there, I, I think either the current policies that we have and also the, the new proposed J one ninety-one, I think you still have those things. You know, if, if someone assaults a teacher, that's not okay. And that immediately goes to that level three, level four response where we're talking about a suspension and, and removing that child from the classroom. You know, I don't think there's ever a point in time where we say that certain things are okay. Um, but I think some of these minor things, we're talking about classroom disturbances and we're talking about, uh, you know, a lot, the majority, what I would say, the majority of what we deal with are minor things that are repeated behaviors. And we have to, just like Mr. Wright said, a lot of, oftentimes we have to teach those children why that's not okay. Um, because depending on the circumstance, they, they haven't had that instruction.
Okay. Thank you. And one more for Missy. Oh, and by the way, on those boys that like to fight, we used to have twenty-two ounce gloves and we'd put them out there and they could wear each other out.
There's a lot of things we used to do that, uh, that worked, you know?
Yep. Missy, on the, on my question about the survey about is this, do you think this has worked? Do you think we should fund it? Could we, are we going to?
Yes, sir. We plan to have that back for you from the schools that are implementing by the April ninth day, I think is the.
By that, you mean the schools that are fully fidelity?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Wright has prepared a list and presented that to me today and we're going to work on something to send out.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I add one thing? Cause I think it's important when he's talking about these kids that he do reach the point where it's a disciplinary and they have to leave. Just to, I guess to give a shout out to what's happened at Ridgedale Alternative and Ridgedale School, which they house the middle school alternative and Richard Yocle School. It doesn't stop there. We have restorative interventions in those buildings too, and it keeps happening. We keep working with, you know, PBIS is the, the I C R theory of behavior. There's a reason these kids have gotten to that point. And it's beyond the school now. We're working hard there and, and one of the things we're doing, which is a part of the guidelines, the new guidelines, but we're already doing it. When those kids are going there, the schools are still keep, one of the goals of restorative, uh, practices is to restore and repair relationships. We're keeping those relationships with the base school. And those schools and restorative interventionists are setting up meetings and the schools are coming to those places to, to meet with the kids and talk with the kids and get plans for when they come back and hopefully see some reducing recidivism in these kids coming back and giving the kids hope that when they go back, there's not, not a target on my back anymore. So really it's a shout out to them because what they're doing there is, is really great. The restorative interventionists there, both of them are doing a great job working with the base schools and, so.
And I can speak specifically to that. I have a young lady who's in eighth grade who in sixth grade spent the majority of the year at Ridgedale. Last year in seventh grade, she, her behavior continued. She spent the majority of the year in Ridgedale. She started off eighth grade the same way and by fall break, we had already reached that point to where we knew her behavior was not changing. We had a meeting and, and she ended up going to Ridgedale until Christmas. And she's come back and she's by no means perfect, but she has stayed with us now past spring break. And I think a lot of that's a testament to the work that they're doing at Ridgedale and Richard Yocle. And then also like, as Mr. Wright said, uh, myself, our grade-level administrator and our restorative interventionist went back over and we had discussions about that behavior and talked about some things she had learned and how she was going to change those things when she came back to our school. And again, like I said, it's not perfect. She still had some of the same behaviors, but when she left us, she led the school in those minor disciplinary infractions on our log. And, and that's been a total change, uh, since she's been back with us. Um, and, and on another note, and I may get in trouble for saying this because Missy doesn't know I'm going to say, she, she doesn't ever know what I'm going to say. Um, but as we're talking about alternative schools, I've had some great discussions with Ms. Gossett at the alternative school because I, I have historically had a lot of students who spend time over there. Uh, and one of the things that we recognize is that we only send students to alternative school for punitive reasons. I have conversations with parents almost weekly where they want to know what I have to do. I have, parents come in and ask me, can I send, can I have my child at the alternative school? Just because big school, as we like to call it, doesn't work for them. When they get to Ridgedale or where they get to Richard Yocle and they're in a setting where it's smaller and it's more structured, they perform and they do well. And we do them a real injustice when we put them right back with us without those supports and expect them to then function normally in a school with a thousand students. Um, so that, you know, I, I know it's budget time and as you all think and, and, you know, move forward in the, in the years and how we, it, address behavior, I think we can be proactive with a lot of these students by providing an alternative setting that just works for them. Because it doesn't need to be and doesn't have to be punitive. And right now, we, we're waiting to get to the point where we're, we're training children. We're, we're teaching them, if, if they want to get to a setting that works for them, they have to act up. And that's, I think a lot of times that's what we see is they continue to just up the ante until they get, we get to the breaking point and say, we can't deal with it anymore. You've got to go to alternative school. And there are some students who just need that smaller setting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Missy, I want to ask you one, well, maybe two quick questions.
Yes, sir.
First of all, it's a, I guess you'd say a reaffirmation of something that we discussed in the workshop, uh, retreat, whatever you want to call it. Uh, I believe you said that anytime, uh, a criminal act occurred, that all this stuff stopped, law enforcement was called and they, you know, they, they come in and take over until, and do whatever if, if they're going to do it. Uh, it, that still holds?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and when a criminal act occurs, the police or sheriff's department are doing their investigation. And sometimes we're on complete hold. It just depends on what the crime that was committed was. And then once they give us the go-ahead, they're doing whatever it is they're going to do, whether they're charging or whether they're not charging. The school system still is following their process and procedures. So if it's a, an act that might not result in a charge out in the community, that maybe the, there's not, there's a decision by the DA's office not to prosecute the student, that doesn't mean that the student still won't have a suspension because it's a suspendable act in school.
Okay. Just to sort of follow up on that, um, am I to assume that, uh, somebody has to determine whether a criminal act occurred or not? Uh, would, would the, uh, the principal be the person that, that made that decision?
So if there is an alleged crime, they, I mean, we're not, they don't determine guilt or innocence at that point in time. If, if there's been an accusation of a, of a crime that a student's involved in and they're, they're suspected of a crime, then we are required to report that to law enforcement. They'll investigate it and determine whether it's a crime or not. So one student accuses another student of some kind of very inappropriate behavior. We'll report that to DCS and to law enforcement. They will investigate that. Our investigation is on hold while they're doing their investigation. We will still do an investigation at some point or we may have some information that law enforcement shares with us, just depending again upon what the specifics are of that situation. We have to work in partnership, um, with law enforcement and DCS so that we're not doing anything that interferes with their investigation.
Well, let's, let's just say, for example, that if, if a student assaulted a teacher. would the principal not automatically deem that to be a criminal act?
That assault would be a criminal act, so that would be reported.
Yeah, they would automatically report.
Yes, sir.
The burden would be on the principal, not certainly couldn't be on the teacher.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Did you have something else you wanted to add, Mr. Wright?
We did, we'd like to show the quick video.
Oh, that's right, the video.
Yeah, the video. So another shout out to Prentice for putting this together, how he does it with hours and hours of interviews and spits it together, but it's pretty good, so.
While they're pulling that up, I just wanna thank Mr. Brown and Ms. Martin.
What kind of challenges or problems do you think students are coming into school facing?
Where's the speaker on here? Sorry.
What kind of challenges or problems do you think students are coming into school facing? Do you think your kids come here bearing a certain level of stress or toxic stress from outside of school? What kind of challenges do you see in your classroom that your kids are facing?
Our kids deal with so much outside of the classroom. You can see, you know, anger, you can see rage, you can see frustration.
Because I don't trust anyone, you know what I mean? I mean, it's just certain stuff you just keep to yourself or your parents or whatever.
Kids coming in, walking in the front door, or walking in with a lot of issues, that their baggage that they're carrying in every day.
I've always been angry.
Really, this is thirty-four years, and kids come in here with a lot of shelters.
Yeah, those people have, like, loss, that they're like, people have actual problems with them, they're going through even breakups, or parents fighting, losing relationships with their parents, and so.
I guess the classic answer was, if you can't breathe, it doesn't matter how well you're learning, you need to breathe first.
It helps me to remember that the kid is a whole person. It gives me a honest platform for communication for those kids. It's helped them, I feel like, to take ownership individually before, whereas they would maybe blame their responsibility or their problems that they were having on someone else. But now they can take on ownership in it and understand why they, they want to do it again.
The suspension, a lot of times, doesn't deal with the root cause of, like, why the kid's getting in trouble. So if the kid has anger issues, they don't need to be suspended, they need to have tools to deal with the anger. Or if they have a conflict with a kid, they need tools to deal with the conflict with the kid.
I don't believe that restorative practices has to be instead of discipline. I think restorative practices, for me, is having a means to work through whatever has happened.
We are gonna talk about something related to the biographies that we've been writing.
Circle uptime is a time where you could express your feelings and tell everybody and introduce yourself to them if they don't really know you.
Well, good morning, boys and girls.
I like the family circle because, like, you can talk, you can talk to the people, and Ms. Parrott says, and Ms. Parrott says, "So whatever we talk in the circle, it stays in our classroom, because you don't go telling people what happens in our circle."
He is so nice, very good. Okay, now you can pass it on to Noah.
You get a lot of stuff off your chest, like you ain't comfortable with time with people.
You know, it's not like you're gonna have one circle, and then suddenly the class is fixed. It's gonna be something that we return to and return to. But it was nice to see the students take some ownership of their behavior and understand that I'm a human being.
Our morning talk time this morning is gonna be, "I can show kindness by..." The other day, we were talking about, "What made you happy this week?" And she said, "What made me happy is my mom got cleared from cancer. She no longer has cancer." And I was like, boom, it just hit me. These kids don't just come here to get a book. They have all this going on, but it's in here, and they're afraid to share it.
A lot of students don't think that they can do that in a classroom. You don't think that you can process your feelings when you're learning math.
At first, I was like, "This isn't gonna work." I was like, "This isn't gonna work at all."
Man, this is stupid, and stuff like that.
Is there anything that you wish that you could do different, and if so, what?
I was nervous, because I didn't know what was gonna happen.
I wish I could.
Go back and do better?
Okay, and I believe it.
If you're not prepared to learn math, and you're in that situation, you weren't gonna learn it anyway. So we might as well take a second to figure out what the root of the problem might be or how your behaving might affect others.
If, if I didn't have that practice, I probably would be not here right now. I'd probably be in, like, a ton of this school or something.
I've seen students who've had almost failing grades come up to Bs and As just because of refocusing their focus on things that matter while they're here.
At first, I did feel like maybe it's one more thing to juggle, but then, once I got into it and my students responded very well to it, it made it a lot easier, it took off less stress for the classroom management and the behavior problems.
When teachers do it, they experience it, and they like the feedback and what they're getting from the kids. It's not, it's not doing anything extra, in my opinion, it's just doing what you wanted to do to begin with, but now you feel confident and empowered to do it.
They, like, took the time out of their, like, life to, like, get to know me.
When you say more stuff in the circle, you learn more, how to speak up more.
I used to get in trouble a lot, but now it's not so much.
I feel like it worked really well, and I thought about, like, all the other ways I could get through in a situation other than the wrong way.
It feels great because, like, because, like, when I'm mad, like, I just don't like, I just don't know, like, how to do the work. But then, when I get the anger out, I can do the work.
For some kids, it's really an aha kind of life-changing moment, where they realize that school can be a place they can be successful, and there are people who care about them here.
Did you have anything else, Missy? I think the board has had a great discussion, and I appreciate Ms. Massey and Mr. Wright and Mr. Brown and Ms. Martin, thank you so much for your patience and being willing to answer all those questions. Thank you. Okay, given that we are now looking at the fiscal year 2019 budget and capital plan update, we're gonna take a short recess, and we will come back at six fifty and begin that for, anyway, so. Okay, we're gonna move on, and I'm gonna refer to Superintendent Thomas to begin the fiscal year 2019 budget and capital plan update. Superintendent Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I just wanted to make a few comments before Gary talks in more specific terms with you about the budget. First of all, let me thank Gary and his staff for countless hours that they have spent putting information together and looking at information budget-related for the board and in preparation of a recommendation. And this year is shaping up to be one that's pretty challenging for several reasons, and I'll let Gary talk about the numbers. But in terms of the reasons for those challenges and looking at state revenue, what we've been able, we don't have an estimate yet on BEP. It's usually around mid-April before we get that estimate. But again, Gary and his staff have looked at the numbers and looked at past trends and percentages of what we get in terms of BEP. So it does look like, unless there's some dynamic going on in the formula that we're not aware of, that there will be an increase in BEP funds, but probably not quite as much as there's been in the past, might be a little less in terms of BEP, so from a revenue standpoint. The other dynamic that we're looking at is local revenue, and sales taxes are trending pretty much on, as projected. There's slight growth in sales tax, but again, not a whole lot of growth there, and then property taxes are pretty flat as well. So in looking at revenue sources, it looks like there will be some limitations there. Again, we're living, as we all know, under an MOU that basically specifies we'll live within natural growth. On the expenditure side, there's some items that, and again, Gary will talk about these in more specifics, but that are having a very significant impact on our budget for this next year. One being, well, I'll just kind of run through several of these for you. Last year, the health insurance increased, and we're also anticipating another increase in health insurance this year. So in order to abide by the MOU that we have with our teachers, we, the board, would maintain their percentage of an increase. So there will be an increase for employees, but there'll also be an increase, pretty significant increase, for Knox County schools. Also, the state, and looking at the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System Plan, there's also gonna be an increase there that will create another budgetary impact for us because of the employees that are participating in TCRS, which is a large number of our employees, certified employees. So there's, because of that percentage change that the employer is responsible for, there will be an increase there. And we've talked about this, there are two new middle schools coming on this year, and the additional cost there, about $4.7 million, we've talked about. This is, this will be the third year of the commitment we made to transportation to increase our transportation budget. So we're looking at a pretty significant increase there. There are also charter schools, enrollments going up, they're adding two grades at the charter school and about 125 students. So again, a significant expenditure impact there with charter schools. And then, we've had some staffing changes this year that were not budgeted at the end of last year, but have been necessary because of the positions, and Gary can go into that a little bit more detail. So again, there's some dynamics going on with expenditures that we have very little control of, so, and revenue being fairly limited. And again, just talk about those items, and this is not on purpose that I didn't mention a salary increase, but once you have an idea about the increases that we're gonna be facing with, the challenge is gonna be actually to find money for the increases that I've talked about, and that's not even including anything salary-related. So although health insurance and TCRS are benefits, but when we look at salary and benefits, kind of go hand in hand. So at this time, I'll just let Gary get there to the lectern and kind of take us through his presentation of budget. And again, thank you, Gary, and your staff for all that you've, the information that you've put together for us.
May I ask one question before we start? Mr. Thomas, I just wanna be clear, when we talk about salary increases, step increases are in the budget, correct?
That is correct. Step increases for all employees who are entitled to a step are in this budget.
Okay, so increase would be over and above a step increase?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
All right, good evening, and I'll try to lead you through this fairly quickly, and we do have meetings with each of you coming up over the next two weeks before the superintendent recommends his budget to the board for FY 2019. You should have a packet, you should see this sheet here, which is a fairly detailed, obviously, sheet, but it outlines for you what we're projecting or forecasting for revenues for 2019. I appeared here on January 31 to talk about the budget early on, and that was that same night Governor Haslam released his budget. And you'll see in this document that our estimate is that revenues from the BEP will increase by about $7.4 million based upon that budget document. That's overall with the actual January 2018 final number that we got, we're looking at about a 4.9% increase in BEP funds. If you go down the sheet and you look in the Knox County area, the total increase that we're forecasting there is only $2.3 million, and that's less than 1% increase in local county revenues. I've worked fairly closely with Chris Caldwell on this, and he's not overly optimistic that there's gonna be a whole lot of growth in local revenues. Other sources actually show a decrease for the year, and most of that has to do with the phase-out of the early literacy grant that comes from Knox County and from the mayor. Overall, looking at about a 2.5% increase from the $471,164,000 that were budgeted for this current year FY 2018 to $483 million. If you look back a few years, look back at FY 2016, that number was $438 million, now it's $483 million, which is pretty significant growth in overall revenues. But in those two years prior to this one, we experienced, or we saw and forecasted increases of over 3.5% each of the years. If you go to the next page, you'll see, you'll see a document that looks like this, and this is kind of the, as Bob was talking about, the sort of thing we do with the governor's budget. Governor's budget is, I don't think it's a thousand pages long, but it's several hundred, and going through to find items that have to do with BEP, sometimes are a challenge. But if you look at the top section of this, you'll see total state BEP funding for the years 2012 through 2018, and it's grown from $3,725 million to $4,609 million over those years, which is about, it's over a 23% increase in total funding, BEP funding. KCS's allocation of that has grown about 31.1% from roughly $158 million in 2012 to $208 million this year, and this is based on the July final numbers. So historically, if you look at the percent of the state total, it's averaged somewhere around 4.4% over the last five years. And that's where we start. We take that number and then apply it to the different line items in the governor's budget that have to do with BEP to estimate how much of the increase, and these are increases, these are not total budget numbers that are in the governor's budget. What percentage, we apply that percentage to try to come to a dollar figure as to what Knox County will share in those totals. And if you go into that first block there, you'll see those individual items that are shown as BEP recurring funding in the governor's budget. None of these, none of these numbers are designated for what is shown. This is a pool of money, and this is the way the state allocates its BEP funds. And it doesn't really, when we get our allocation, it doesn't say you have to pay these sums to teachers, for example. It does if the average teacher's salary is below the state average. You have to do that. But ours is well above the state average. So this will come in as a pool of money. Two things that really stood out when I was analyzing the budget and really got kind of concerned about it, one of, the first one was the TCRS retirement contribution rate increase that's effective one July 2018. And you can see that in the 2018 proposal, which is the shaded column, which is there for reference, in the governor's budget, there was an increase of $5.8 million, but for 2019, that number increased to $22.2 million. Now, what you might say is, "Well, we get some funds to help..." Now, what you might say is, well, we get some funds to help pay that. Well, yeah, help pay it, but it's not going to pay for it all. And that's where the real hook is in all of this. And then group health insurance, they included, he included in his budget a 5% increase as of January the 1st, 2019, which again, if you look at the numbers, in the 2018 budget, it was roughly $12.5 million. And then in the 2019 budget, it's $27.8 million. So again, that was a scary number to see. Both of those are very scary. And if you look at what we can estimate we might get out of that, in total, it's about a little less than $2 million. Down below, you're going to see some non-recurring funding items, and one of them has to do with enrollment growth. And that only kicks in if the district has enrollment growth of 2% or greater. And for the 16 to 17 years, the enrollment growth was just right at 1%. And so we have not participated in that money for several years. Then down below, you'll also see that in the governor's budget proposal, he included an additional $10 million for priority schools. And that's one of those lines where possibly, possibly, the district might get some money, but you don't want to have priority schools. So you don't want that money. I mean, if you can help it, but at the same time, it's there to help fund priority schools if the district should have priority schools. So all in all, in looking at that, if you look over in the right-hand column, we're estimating around $7.4 million, which is what is on the cover sheet that you were looking at earlier. Now, if you go to the next sheet, you should see this crazy sheet right here, which is where we monitor monthly sales tax collections that are allocated to the school district that come into the trustee's office. The upper section of this is where we're monitoring those collections to see how we're tracking on budget. And we do that based upon a five-year running and moving average, as well as the previous fiscal year's collection trend. And as you can see, for 2018, for the current year, we're right on budget or slightly above budget in collections. Or if you look at the bottom line, there's a projected surplus of around $1.7 million in collections. Then if you look at the two graphs below, the first one you're going to see is the collection trending and how the cycle happens throughout the year as far as sales tax collections. And you'll see a peak in there, right in this area right here, and that's Christmas time. That's where those collections, that's the merchants collect in December, and we get credited back those in February. So as you can see, over the three-year period, this trend is very consistent as far as how money gets to the district and how it's collected based upon the actual dollar amounts. Then you see a dramatic falloff, which has happened this year as well. We just received this data last week, but it's the January collections, or the January merchant collections, which we get in March. And then you see the trending out here for the final months of the year. This real big dip in here last year is very disturbing because we could never, and Chris Caldwell can never get an explanation from the state what had happened here. But as you can see, it recovered over the next couple of months and continued on to the point of where the actual collections were pretty much on target with the previous year. The graph below is a year-over-year growth in cumulative sales tax collections. And the red line is FY 17 versus FY 16, and how it grew to this point in the, in January collections from merchant collections and to this point, and then it dropped off dramatically here in the next month. Now, that's where all of this gets really tenuous when we're looking at these numbers because this, if we see this dramatic decline again this year, then we're probably not going to be on the target that I just suggested up above as far as the budgets, budget to actuals are concerned. But nevertheless, we're at, we're right here at about $2.1 million over and above where we were last year. If you go to the next, the next page, you'll see, you'll see just some summary numbers as far as the collections, the revenue collections. The left-hand side talks about collections from the major sources for the general purpose fund. The left, the far-left-hand side is the state BEP, then the local option sales tax, and then local property taxes. On the right-hand, you're going to see the sources of where the funds are coming from and the relative sources, the relation to each other. And as I talked about earlier, obviously, the state of Tennessee are the major funds that we're projecting receiving in 2019. The next, the next page is, is pretty dramatic when you look at it. But what we've done here is looked at budgeted revenues from 2016 through 2018, and then the forecast for 2019. And the source of those revenues, the top line being the state BEP allocation, and then the second line being from all other sources and total revenues. So as you can see, when you look over at the far-right-hand side, where it's titled cumulative totals, over that period of time of the $45 million increase in total revenues from the $438 to the $483 million, 77 or almost 78% of those were BEP funds, or roughly $35 million. Then when we look at the bottom section and look at how the budget was built in these years and the changes in the budgeted dollars, you'll see that in that first change from 2016 to 2017, there was a $15.5 million increase in revenues, but we turned around and we spent roughly $15.4 million of that on the three items that you see there. One of them being the employer's share of health insurance premiums, then the employer contributions to state retirement plans, and then raises for certified and classified employees. You see that same, those same numbers in the next year from 2017 to 2018, and we also had a small amount in there for the two new middle schools. So the $17.6 million, $13.5 million of it went for these items. So when we look at the forecast for 2019, and we see an increase in total of right at $11.8 million, and $10 million of that coming from the BEP, the two middle schools represent almost $4.7 million, $4.7 million of committed costs. Then we'll talk about these other two items, but the employer contributions for health insurance premiums, as well as to the state retirement plans, are another $6.4 million. So we're looking at, in just those committed areas right there, over $11 million to spend for this 2019 year, whereas on BEP, we're getting right at $10 million. So in total, if you look over in the far-right-hand column, you can see the cumulative totals of those different items, and then how that compares down below, you'll see as a percentage of the BEP dollars. And this little chart at the bottom is pretty dramatic as well. The green bars or columns being the BEP collections and then, or increases, and then the red columns being the totals of these committed costs. And as the question was asked about step increases, yes, the step increases are reflected in the budget, but as you can see here, there are no dollars for raises. Questions?
Looking at that graph that, that is on right now, in 2017, we had BEP funds of roughly $13.8. Is that correct?
That was the increase.
The increase, but our, our uses were 10-plus.
Correct.
So of that difference, what, where did that go?
Well, one big chunk of it went to transportation. That was a million dollars, because that was, 2017 was the first year of the three-year plan. Another big chunk of it went to positions that the general purpose fund absorbed from some of the grant areas.
Gotcha.
Another big portion of it went to the charter school, roughly, it drains, or not drains, that's the wrong word, sorry. It takes about a million, an additional million dollars a year as they add grade levels. So I would, just off the cuff, say that that's probably a lot of it.
So in 18 then, I'm, I am assuming, like I know the transportation and the charter were recur, became recurring.
Yes.
For us, so that's why it skews.
In the change in 2017 to 2018, we did see some robust increases in sales tax collections. You'll see that the BEP was $11.2 million of the increase, but then the other sources was $6.4 million. And most of that increase was the local option sales tax increase collections.
Okay.
Am I answering your question?
Well, sort of, but I'll see you next week.
So if we go, if we go to the, into the next page, you're going to see our overview for expenditures. And this is a really busy schedule, but that's, that's why we distributed a paper copy so you could follow along a little better. When we started looking at these expenditures, we tried to look at those that involve some sort of commitment from the district, those are, that's where we look first, you know, what are, what's the district committed to funding? And the first two items there are what I was talking about on the state side with the health insurance increase in premiums, as well as the increase in contributions to the certified retirement plan. I will tell you that if you look over to the far-right-hand column, there's, it's headed up attachment, and where it says page 2, 3, 4 on down the line, you're going to see some support for those numbers. And I say some because it's very much in summary form, like for example, in this health insurance number that you're looking at here, this $4.3 million, you're going to see about two or three lines of data in that schedule, but that involved the collection and the analysis of several, or I would say somewhere between 5,000 and 6,000 data points to get to these totals. This is not something we did on the back of an envelope. So I will tell you that. If you look at medical insurance or health insurance premiums, one of the things in detail you discover is that the percentage that the district is paying under the different plans goes from somewhere in the 50% range up to as high as almost 80% on some of these plans. And the one plan that's the most popular, the district is picking up almost 70% of the cost of it. And so under the MOU that Bob was talking about earlier, if, unless the MOU has changed, we're kind of committed to continue the funding at those same levels. So that's where you see the $4.3 million increase in health insurance cost. The contribution to the state retirement plan takes a little bit of explanation because there are two state retirement plans now. There's what's called a hybrid plan, which I get these confused. I'm not sure whether that's the old one or the new one.
New one.
It's the new one, the legacy plan. If you look at the legacy plan contributions, they're the ones that went from 9.08% up to 10.46%. Now, that may not sound like a whole lot of money, but when you're dealing with a $250 million payroll, you know, it is a lot of money. And so when we did the analysis of that and broke it down, we're looking at roughly a $2.1 million increase in that contribution. We will have some savings, the third line there on the extra determination of the contribution for the local closed retirement funds, but overall, just those three items are around $6.2 million. The next section has to do with the opening of the two new middle schools at Gibbs and Harton Valley. And I shared with you, I think at the end of January, a schedule of those costs as well. And this is where we've gotten to at this point in time, that the incremental cost of operation are around $4.7 million for those two schools. The third section has to do with the opening of the, or movement of the, sorry.
Excuse me, everybody's looking down, so can I ask a question about the incremental cost for the middle schools? That's personnel, or is that fixed cost?
About 62% of it is personnel.
Okay.
And I say that hesitantly, hesitantly, because there, when you, you know, in the broad scheme of things, transportation is personnel, is people too, you know, so there are other people involved in that.
But it's not fixed asset cost?
No.
It's not, it's not the building, it's not that kind of thing? It is recurring, ongoing cost for maintenance, utilities, people.
That's correct.
Okay.
And in this number, to your point, is that there is no debt service cost in here as well. If we rolled in the debt service, that's about, I think about another $3.8 million that we're able to pay now because debt came off of the schedule that was, you know, the debt service was basically equivalent to it.
Okay, thank you.
Then the CUSP and priority school staffing, this is one that's been discussed quite extensively with the board, and that had to do with the non-renewal of the memorandum of understanding with UT for the Leadership Academy helping to fund the increase in the compensation for teachers at the CUSP and priority schools. So we're showing that is no, no impact on the projected expenditures for the year. Then the next section, we take on three or four different items, one of them being student transportation. You'll see there the million dollars, this is the third and last year, that base budget bill for bus contractors, and then also some additional costs of some rezoning, as well as some bell time changes at two, two of the high schools. So net, that's with, with transportation's election to defer some software, it's around $1.2 million. The increases in cost of supplies, materials, and contracted services, that's a whole bunch of different things, but it's basically long-term commitments that we've got, or the district has, that we have to continue to fund. There may be contracts of three, three to five years long with internet service providers or people of that nature, or whatever, that have some increases that we're building in There are a couple of capital items that, or capital line items that we're reducing. One of them was a one-time funding for CTE equipment at Yocle, and the others for $200,000 for vehicles. I will tell you that I've been in discussions with Chris Caldwell about some funding of some additional shorter-term capital items through another source with the, with the county, and he's open to funding around a million dollars of that. The three biggest ones being these vehicles that the maintenance department needs, also the one-to-one, or the individual devices for the two new middle schools, as well as, and this may not sound like a whole lot of money, but it actually is, the band and orchestra instruments for those two new middle schools. That's a big, big dollar item. So we can talk about that once we have the individual meetings and gotten a little clearer indication of what the county's opening to help, open to help us with. We have a couple of programs that, the early literacy program is, as I said, the grant's being phased out, so when you lose $570,000 of grant revenue, you have to come up with $570,000 of expenditures to cut. And so that's what that's all about. Athletic insurance, it's about $280,000, and Marion Quinn has committed himself to funding that through gate receipts, as well as the costs, or the billings to the individual athletes for their athletic insurance. The flow-through items, we call them flow-through items, but the charter school funding, as I stated earlier, Emerald's enrollment is expected to increase by around 125 students, that's two additional grade levels, and this is the flow-through of our state and local revenues to the charter school. You may ask, I think this is the next to last year of additional grades added at the charter school. There's one more year for one more grade to be added there after 2019. But that rolls into the base budget at about a half million dollars a year per grade level. But that rolls into the base budget at about a half million dollars a year per grade level. Debt service, as I was speaking earlier, the, um, the debt on the two new middle schools is, the increase there is being offset by some roll-off of earlier debt, so that we're actually seeing a lower debt service number for, uh, 2019. Not by a whole lot, but anything helps, right? And then the entity-level expenditures of the trustees commission. The trustee gets to collect commission whether we're in the hole or not. So, this is money we have to pay to the trustee for, uh, his processing of our cash receipts. So, just projected net expenditure increases for, for this next year are right at twelve point two million dollars. Now, below that, you're gonna see a section, which is staffing, that was added or was being funded by a different source in 2018, but it wasn't in the, the base budget in the operating fund. And this is roughly almost forty-four people. And, uh, we provided a detailed schedule of these individual, not the individuals, but the positions, and divided that into three different categories, one of them being student, critical student needs, district level, uh, types of positions, and district level meaning that these individuals serve more than one school.
Ms. Roundtree had a question. Mr. Spencer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Gary. Um, I don't know if you wanna, the schedule that you're talking about here is something I had a question on. Um, and I'm curious about the difference in some of these positions, the FTEs, and then the listing of the salary, and then the salary and the benefits and the breakdown. Like, there's a, there's a fairly large difference in, well, one, I'm not sure what these behavioral liaisons, their actual, what they're doing. Um, but as far as the financial part, um, the salary, the, the benefits cost is less than the actual difference in their salary. So I'm confused about why the benefits are different for each of those people. All right, it's the, it's the broken down schedule, the last page.
There, there are.
Yes.
There are factors on, on benefits. Some of these are classified employees, they're not certified. So, the contribution to the classified retirement plan is six percent, not the ten percent. In addition to that, on the, for example, the family community liaisons, two of those are part-time employees. Uh, the ones which have the relatively small salary amounts, um, they work time card. I mean, we could, the reason we didn't, there, there are lots of reasons we didn't include more detail.
I can ask in my budget meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
And then I guess, um, my other question, and this probably would be a question for John. Um, I guess I wanna know about these five I-zone facilitators. And, you know, we've talked a lot about that grant going away and rolling off, and maybe there's gonna be an opportunity to have another grant, but, um, I guess I would like some more explanation about these folks and their position because, um, you know, seeing we have a great, you know, we have a lot of needs and that's four hundred thousand dollars, I'm not sure if that, you know, is, I don't know what they're doing.
John, John will be there tomorrow.
Okay.
Unless.
Can I ask, so basically, you're showing us what is currently, that the superintendent's gonna come to us with a budget and that will recommend what gets cut, I assume? Or ask for additional revenue. Those are the two choices. And we have an MOU that currently says we can't. So, I mean.
No, I'm just, I just wanted to understand what those people, what that position was and what they were doing.
You wanna answer it now? I mean, John can answer that for you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Roundtree. Um, the I-zone facilitators were, as you said, Ms. Roundtree, originally part of the I-zone grant, uh, that was given to, um, to schools in priority status. Um, there were five positions, a behavioral liaison, a special ed facilitator, a literacy coach, an early literacy coach, and a numeracy coach were the five, basically. They're called facilitators, but basically that's their function. They served those four schools and have been funded through the grant. Um, as you guys know, priority schools are ones that the commissioner will come at the end of this year. Hopefully, they're off the list, that's our hope, but as someone, I think Gary said, you know, the downfall of that is you lose money if they come off the list and, and to fund positions like that. Um, we have been visited by, um, the state and, and some of the findings that they had for us that they thought were really good about a month ago. Um, one was the fact that we were gonna extend contracts. They thought that was great for those priority schools. Uh, and one of their findings that was positive as well was that we had these I-zone facilitators who were dedicated every day. They serve in those schools, uh, and they go between our four priority schools, uh, doing various things. If it's leading PLCs, if it's in classrooms, supporting teachers. Um, they work closely with our subject area supervisors to know exactly what those schools need and to carry out their professional development plans for those schools. So, uh, one thing that the state did tell us was that's a promising practice they're seeing in Shelby County and Metro Nashville as well, and the schools that are priority schools is to have people who's, who aren't split across multiple schools. I mean, you know, you know, a whole lot, they're concentrated just in priority, uh, and working on those. But those are the five positions and, um, by, because of the stipulations of the grant, they can't serve any other schools but those four priority schools.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
What is GP?
General purpose.
General purpose.
Oh, general purpose.
And then I guess, um, for my meeting tomorrow, John, if you can get for me, um, I'd like to know if, um, these reading coaches, how many of those have a reading specialist certification, please? Thank you.
And so, back to the.
Ask a question?
Yes, I've.
Sorry.
Yes.
Um, so, the county said they would, or have we asked if they're gonna provide us with any money for the literacy grant? I mean, is it just definitely going away and they're not?
Well, if you look at the revenue, oh, you mean as far as after 2019, it's gone.
So, they're not even considering trying to bring it back for us at all?
We'll have a new mayor.
Okay. Okay. Then this next question I'll ask at the end, 'cause I'm gonna ask Gary about this MOU that we tied to since we can't ask for money, and I wanna know what happens if we do. And is it legal? Because we got all these unanticipated things, and I thought one board can't tie another board. So, I'm asking about the legality of that MOU and why we can't ask for some money. It's definitely needed. We see we have to have money. So, we can answer that later.
Okay, go ahead.
That's the other Gary, right?
Yeah, she's talking about Gary before.
That's lawyer Gary over there.
Lawyer Gary.
I'm innocent Gary. That's lawyer Gary. Okay, so, bottom line, if someone is, is.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Gary, can, can we go back to the trustees? Um, that's the additional forecast. What it, can you remind us the total on that?
There's a schedule, and I'm trying to find which page it's on. Um, page, page eleven? If you scroll down past that, uh, yeah, page eleven, what we're projecting is the total for the FY nineteen budget of right at four point two million dollars, trustees commission. And I will tell you that we.
What is, I wonder what the trustee's budget is in total?
Um, well, I know that.
I'll just say, Susan, don't go there. We ask this every year.
I know, I know you do, I just.
I know at the end of his year, he's always very proud to go in front of commission with a check in hand saying, "I'm giving this to the general fund." Yeah. Um, I will tell you that we have been working on negotiating some of these commissions, and we've been successful in getting some of them waived, but, uh, that's, that's a tough negotiation. So that leaves us short by three point two million dollars. And that's with no raise for anyone other than step increases.
Okay, Ms. Roundtree had another question.
Um, this is on the, the, um, explanation sheet about the moving Lonsdale kindergarten to Sammy Hill. And I was just, on the breakout sheet, excuse me for that budget, and this might be a John question. I'm just, I'm wondering what the instructional support is, what that, is that like a part-time assistant principal? Or, I don't know what that is. It's on page six. It's a, um, oh, I guess they were a half-time person and now they're a proposed full-time person.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Roundtree. If, uh, so, we, I'll try to summarize this quick. Coaches have taken on lots of different parts of history in Knox County. So about, uh, we got together last year in the budget cycle, uh, and, you know, it used to be coaches were kinda central office people who were sent to the schools, uh, and then there were some people who were hiring at the school level. Um, so, so C and I got together with finance last year and we worked to where, uh, we were able to give, uh, in essence, schools a plus-one position called instructional support position. And it's their position that lives in the school. Some people wanted numeracy, some people wanted behavioral liaison, some people wanted an NAA to help with some administrative things. We didn't really care what that was, but we wanted to give them a plus-one because we can't give everybody what they need for all those positions. So, um, my understanding, looking at this, talking to Gary, is that instructional support position that they would be able to name what level of support they needed for that school is that's what that point five position is. Some got a half because of the population of the school.
Sure, okay. That's what I thought, I wasn't sure.
Okay.
And then, um, I don't know, I don't know what the percentage of the FTEs for Lonsdale is for their encore, but, because that's on, obviously not on this sheet, but I'm just wondering if they don't have full-time encore, are those people then gonna also serve at Sammy Hill? Because like, they're gonna get, they're gonna get, they're gonna be budgeted a quarter of a person for encore. So I don't know if that means.
Right, they'll, they'll, I mean, they'll share, as, as, um, a lot of schools do have an itinerant position. So, um, I think, um, I'm trying to read this right, Gary, five teachers and two encore hours per week each, so ten teaching hours. That's what's worked out there on the side of that, and the five teachers of five encore hours per week.
Yeah, no, I feel that, it's just.
Okay.
Instruction, I mean, community-wise, it seems like it makes sense.
Oh, that they'd be, you're saying they'd share between the two schools?
Yes, I don't know if that, I don't know if, I don't know if Lonsdale has one FTE for every one of their encores, but if they don't, it's.
Right, they don't.
It makes sense that they would share with Sammy Hill rather than go halfway across the county.
They usually, uh, Julie Thompson usually works with, um, the supervisors to, later in the summer, to kind of assign those. And they try to do that where they can to cut travel time down, uh, based on what they earn for that. So, I mean, that, that would make sense if, if they're at that school to be able to just say, you know, geographically, let's keep them close and in the community, but typically, we have to wait and see kinda how that plays out.
And they would loop through with the kids, I mean, that's the other piece.
Right, and that, that would be another advantage, for sure.
There're gonna be some continuity for the children there. Okay, thank you.
There's one, and this, I know this was, this was part of Bob's email to you yesterday, but there's, we included this FTE table that you see here, um, comparing 2018 to 2019, the different position descriptions. We also included a column in the 2018 numbers showing you what the BEP formula produced for these different classifications of employees. Um, this was in the email, you might. You got it, okay. Um, and when you look at it, one of the things to keep in mind are the two notes that you see there. Uh, the positions that are shaded in blue. The BE, the BEP formula funds those at, um, forty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And of course, we only get fifty-eight point seven two percent of that number. But it, it's, it's worth noting what those positions are. Uh, that includes principals, assistant principals, on and on down the line. And then the ones, uh, the one, the EAs in, in green, that are shaded in green, those are funded at twenty-three thousand dollars. So, when you look at the actual FTE, you're gonna see some pretty, pretty significant differences in the, uh, the numbers of positions. Uh, whereas in the, um, BEP formula, you're looking at four thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine point seven in the last year's budget. We actually had six thousand, three hundred and one point seven. So, there was no funding for the difference in those positions, other than local, local funding.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thanks for putting that in there, Gary. I think this is the, is this the time of the meeting where we talk about yet again that, uh, BEP needs to be revised to address some of these needs? And I, I don't know, I thought on one of these pieces of paper, now I've gotten them all out of order, um, with notes, you, it was the section that had the governor's information about, I think there's gonna be the funding for RTI. But I think, I don't know if you included on here. I'm just curious, and maybe I already asked for this, but how much we're actually spending on RTI? Because my hypothesis is this money that we're gonna get from the state is not really gonna touch what we're already spending on RTI.
No, I think we did an estimate that, uh, yeah, I, this, just, I think the estimate we did a few weeks ago was two point four million dollars, and that's in 2018.
What we spent.
What, yeah, what we're spending.
What we spent on RTI and we're projected to get what, um?
Oh.
The formula.
Six hundred thousand dollars, maybe.
Yeah.
Was one to twenty-seven hundred students.
Yeah, so it's not gonna, it's not gonna touch what we're already spending.
And keep in mind, that's only the, um, what the state, the state's portion.
Yeah.
So we still, uh, have added costs there.
Yeah.
Um, even with them allotting the positions.
Yeah. Um, I don't know if you ever read, there's always an annual report on the BEP by the review committee. That's on, it's on the website, but the recommendation, I think was a ratio of like one to two fifty.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And this is one to.
Twenty-seven hundred.
Twenty-seven hundred.
Right.
At least it's being recognized, you know? We're, we gotta start somewhere. Yeah. It's better than nothing, I guess.
Yeah.
Of course, as I said, we'll have a new mayor, you'll have a new governor as well, so, um, who knows?
Ms. Eel? Uh, so, just to cut to the chase.
Yes.
If we keep everything the same, if we, if we continue doing next year what we're doing this year.
Yes.
And do not give raises, we are short, we are already three point two down.
That's correct.
Ms. Fugit?
Thank you. And to further cut to the chase, when the majority of your budget is people, that's where it comes from. The rest of it is fixed expenses. I mean, let's be real, we cannot reduce the benefits. We can't reduce what we contribute for retirement. I'm not saying we should, I'm just saying that is the reality. So, when you're down three point two million, and most organizations, eighty-something percent, eighty-five percent of their budget is in people. There's, you've only got a little bit to cut, so, um, the superintendent's gonna have a good time coming, bringing us a budget. My question too, uh, just talking about that, about the BEP, I think the, the other issue that we have to realize is there's only so much money to go around, and this is another unfunded mandate. Not that all these things we aren't doing are good, but at some point, how do you pay for them? And we also know that we get less back what we spend because we are viewed as a, as a county that can contribute more to its own education system than more rural counties, based on the lawsuit from years and years ago. So, we are where we are. None of us really like it, but, um, so when we have our conversations, this is just for you. Um, Bob, when we have our conversations with you, it, mine is not tomorrow, mine is, I think, next week. Will I be presented with a balanced budget and what you propose to cut? Because, I mean, that's what I expect you to do, not us sit around in a group and come up with three point two million to cut.
Right, I, I don't.
Right. I, I don't know that I'll have it at your meeting, but that's one reason we want to meet individually with each board member to help me get, get, get a, yes. But eventually, yes, I'll have to present a balanced budget.
Ms. DeFer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And that gets back to my question. You can't cut people. She just, you know, it's about people and it's about us having to pay this. And we still, I don't know what you can cut without cutting things that we do for children and the teachers and the building and people. So my question still goes back, we signed a MOU that ties our hands because, but you still have increasing cost on all these things that we have to pay. How legal are we tied to a MOU to where we cannot go back and ask for funding to cover the cost that is very necessary for us to continue what we do for our children and Knox County school system? And can these, can that tie our hands for future, two more years? Because when we first started this, I think they said it wasn't really a legal document per se because you can't, say you can't never ask for money. So I'm now asking that question because it's coming back around again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. DeFer, I, first of all, I need to clarify exactly what document you're referring to, Ms. DeFer. Are you referring to an intragovernmental memorandum of understanding between the county commission, the mayor, and this board dated June first of 2015?
If that's what ties our hands to two schools and one-time two-percent raise, yes.
All right. So, um, I'll need to go back and, um, you, you know, verify, uh, because what I'm looking at right now, I mean, when you mentioned MOU, so I pulled it up from the, uh, from the school's website, and it's unsigned. So I'll need to verify that it was signed, that it was properly executed. Uh, and, and if it was, then, then I'll be, I'll be happy to take a look at it and then, and then discuss it, um, as soon as the next, uh, work session.
Okay.
But, you, you know, I mean, what it talks about, just what I'm looking at right now, which is, which is an unsigned version, it just talks about those two middle schools primarily. It also talks about a one-time, uh, pay increase. But again, now, from what I'm looking at, it's just a one-time. So, um, and the, the general answer to your question is, can a, can a board bind, uh, a, a future board's hands?
We've been told.
That depends. Yeah. It's, you know...
I mean, we were told two years ago, no.
Well, I mean, I mean, I mean, technically, you can't. But, I mean, you know, the board, uh, ba- back at that time, if this was properly executed, made a commitment to the two new middle schools. And now you're, you're far enough down the road that you have buildings and you have, you know, uh...
Costs.
Yeah, 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 you're well into the process. So, uh, could this board somehow say, well, hey, we don't want to do that? Well, uh, possibly, but there'd be definite consequences.
Well, I, I...
Ms. Fugit, have...
Thank you. I, my, I just wanted to comment on that. I don't think anybody wants to say we don't want to do the middle schools. They're being built. I think what the, what the question would be, as Ms. DeFer just saying, and, you know, all, all anybody can do is say no. But, but I think the question is, you know, if we, if we, if one board could not obligate a future board to, um, document about how we wanted to act as board members, we, uh, one previous board cannot commit a future board to how we were gonna communicate as a board, it does seem plausible that a previous board cannot commit a future board into never asking for additional money for a certain period of time. I think that's why she's asking the question. And, and I don't expect you to answer it today. I'm just telling you, I think that's the logic.
I can, I, I can respond to that.
Three million dollars.
Just based upon what, I'm sorry. No, I didn't mean to interrupt. But, I mean, I, I can say, based upon what I'm looking at now, I don't see that language in there. Saying that you, that you can never ask for more money, or that you can ask for more money within a certain time.
The implication was we had to live within natural revenue growth. And if, if, so if you could get us some, that would be very helpful if we could go ask for three million more dollars.
Not that we'd get it, but you never, never asked.
You have a comment or question?
Yes, I, I did, uh, and regarding the, uh, MOU. I would, uh, I would really caution this board about, um, saying, uh, using language like, um, breaking the MOU or not adhering to what a prior board, uh, agreed upon. I, I'm, I'm thinking at this point, our approach needs to be, it says that we will live, uh, with, uh, natural growth. There's nothing in there that says that you cannot ask, that you cannot request.
That was my point. That was, that's all I was asking.
That you cannot, um, go and say, we have these costs that have occurred that have nothing to do with the amount of spending that we've done, that have nothing to do with fiscal responsibility, you know, increase in insurance, TCRs. That is uncontrolled costs.
And that was my, that was my point exactly, because I, it's just that I've heard that we can't because of that. So that's why I said that. Yeah.
I know, but some of the, but some of the word in the community is that we can't ask for more money because we agree to that. So that's why I think the question has been asked. But you're right, these are unanticipated costs that have nothing to do with us adding headcount or programs or anything, so.
Well, let's turn it back over to Mr. Spencer.
We're done.
Who is here? Do you have others?
I'm finished.
Oh, you're finished?
In more ways than one.
Okay, so there are no more questions for Mr. Spencer. Thank you for all the detail in here, and this is one of the best. He worked so hard to do all the preliminary and leading and guiding and bringing us to this point and with valuable information, and I really appreciate it. So, thank you. Okay, public forum, I think. Ms. Roundtree, we have no one signed up for public forum. Well, that comes under board forum.
Oh.
Oh. I don't know. He said he was finished, okay.
It, it's, it's up to the board. Uh, we, we have our individual meetings, we can discuss those.
Did you want to address those other ones, or who would want to address?
Those are, those are Russ's area, but I could sum it, I can sum it up, I can sum it up for you very quickly. There's no money, so.
Russ, come on up. We don't want you to sit here through this whole meeting and not get a chance to say.
Well, I don't, I don't want to keep you all here for, uh, very long, but, uh, and I think if you can, uh, enlarge that, Terry, and show, we'll talk off, off of that. There's, uh, posted to your agenda are the, uh, capital budget, uh, worksheets for FY nineteen. And, and, uh, we'll talk about this stuff in greater detail when we have our meetings over the next, uh, week or ten days. Uh, but, uh, as you've, uh, previously discussed, we're in the third year of the five-year, uh, agreement. And, you know, what, one of the things that agreement did was it, uh, set our capital funding levels for the, for the coming five years. So next year, what we're working with is twelve-point-four million dollars for our capital plan. And this is, this is really what I call our operational capital expenditures. These, these are things like, uh, physical plant upgrades, and the worksheets for that are, are attached. And we'll go that, into that in more detail, uh, as we meet, uh, individually. Uh, but as, as we look at those, uh, physical plant, uh, upgrades and HVAC upgrades, the, uh, probably the biggest single expense we've, we've got to do in there is finish, uh, our HVAC upgrade at West High School. We started that, uh, program about a year ago, and we've got about a million dollars left, uh, to finish, to finish that program. Uh, I think, also, as you go, go through the list and you look, we've got a lot of smaller items like, uh, foundation stabilization, BEP, uh, growth, that's to buy modular classrooms. That two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars you see dedicated there will get us one, two-classroom modular building. So it's, we're not, you know, spreading a lot of, a lot of money out here. We have, uh, added some money for system-wide drives and parking, that five-hundred-thousand dollars that we're looking at, if we can keep it, uh, there, uh, to help us with asphalt. Uh, we've done some, uh, significant asphalt analysis of all of our campuses, uh, over the last year. And I'll be happy to, uh, share that with you. We've got the results in a book about that thick. Uh, but I wouldn't be surprised if we don't have thirty million dollars' worth of asphalt needs. But we need to start, uh, repaving and, and fixing some of our parking lots and drives. We've got acres of asphalt and miles of drives, uh, out there that we need to address. Uh, we've also got a pretty good, uh, environmental testing program. We're putting some money aside for that. Uh, that's largely water testing, uh, which has been of interest lately. And, uh, we've got a radon, uh, testing and mitigation program that we're working through in all of our schools that you won't see in a lot of other school systems around the, around the, the state. Uh, the, uh, two things you're seeing holding in there, there are carryovers from, uh, our discussion last year. Powell High School cafeteria upgrade and the, uh, Powell Middle School kitchen construction project, uh, that, uh, we're retaining. We're looking at about three-hundred-thousand dollars for, uh, security upgrade, or correction, uh, technology upgrades. And that's to help us continue our VOIP telephone, uh, upgrade where we're replacing our old telephone systems. And also to, uh, replace various servers and switches and things that we need, uh, throughout the year. Uh, security upgrades, uh, one-point-one million. And out of, out of that money, we take, we take fences, uh, we take cameras, uh, systems for our schools. We've still got eight or ten schools that we want to upgrade, uh, for camera systems. And, uh, we're at the point now where we're looking at a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars per school for, for each of those systems. So that's not an insignificant expense. Also, in security upgrades, you may have heard that, uh, the, uh, E-911 is upgrading. It's gonna require all of the emergency responders and us, uh, to upgrade our radio systems over the next twelve to eighteen months. Our bill for that right now is eight-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand dollars. You know, so we'll have to look at that, uh, as, as part of these funds and, and part of what we're managing this year. And then, uh, school accessibility is just money we like to keep, uh, available to us when we have, uh, issues with ADA access that are, uh, identified. And it allows us to go in immediately, do something to rectify problems that are presented to us. So there's no major construction in this pro, in this plan and no, uh, particular recommendations, uh, to do so. Uh, we can talk about some of that in detail when we meet, uh, individually over the next, uh, next week or so. And, and, uh, you know, we can benefit from your insight in, into some of them. But, uh, you know, rather than keep everybody here all night, let's just, uh, sort of one over the world look at this, and we'll be happy to talk details.
Madam Chair, just one question.
Russ, if the, um, uh, if the legislature passes their current budget, which has got, um, some money for, um, security, uh, school security, is, are, are, is it permissible to take those, those new monies and, and apply it toward your one-point-one million?
I, I don't know how they're gonna break that out and, and propose to use those dollars. It's my understanding that, that the money has been proposed, but it's up to the, the committee that's been formed to look at it and to recommend how to, how to use those funds or how to apply them. So I don't know what they're gonna tell us to do with those.
Do they recommend something that is part of what we're going to do anyway? We, we, we take that chunk of change and put it here to free up money for something else?
I would think so, it's possible. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Roundtree.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah. And the other, excuse me, there was also attached to this item, the, um, grad expenditures. And so I think that was, I asked the superintendent, that was something that the board had requested. And it looks like, there's, yeah, lots of information attached there. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that.
Okay, are there any other presenters or questions regarding the budget and capital plan? Ms. Owen.
Um, since Ronnie Chandler's here, I just wanted to check and see if she needed to give us any information about this budget or if it's self-explanatory.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Ms. Owen, uh, that information was part of a larger set of information that was requested that we provide to the finance department. And it shows the, uh, year-to-year expenditure of the funds that were requested, uh, for, by the budget. Uh, it does, in the, in previous years, we were told that those, those, the use of those funds was not restricted. Um, this, we've been asked to reconsider that in the proposal that you'll see in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chandler.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so public forum, do we have anybody, Ms. Roundtree?
Yes, ma'am. Um, Michael McNair.
Good evening, uh, Madam Chair and all of you who are present. I come, uh, to say that I am a pastor here in the inner city and, uh, also a concerned citizen. I'm concerned about the education of our children. And, uh, I just want to come and stand on behalf of Project Grad. My church has partnered with Project Grad, uh, over the years, providing, uh, baskets at Thanksgiving, uh, gift cards at Christmas, and any other thing that we might be able to help with. I even had in a situation where I received a call where a young man was getting ready to graduate, and he didn't have money for his cap and gown and some other things. And we were able to provide that for them. And I just come to say to you tonight that in your budget considerations, please, 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 uh, continue to fund Project Grad because it has a great impact on the children in our community. I have taught with children, uh, and they have shared with me how Project Grad has been such a blessing to them. And so I just urge you and beg you to continue to fund Project Grad. It is a great program and it's of great benefit to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public forum.
We have a item to discuss, um, with board forum as far as the preference of our meeting for rescheduling the meeting on April the ninth or leaving as, as it is. Um, I'm gonna let Ms. DeFer kind of explain her situation, and then we'll look at two options that we might possibly have as the board.
Um, I had previously sent the superintendent and, um, copied, uh, Madam Chair about my, uh, inability to be here on the Monday of next month due to the, uh, going to the National School Board Association. I do understand, uh, everyone that's going is gonna be able to get back on Monday. I was asked by the National Presidents to serve as Sergeant of Arms, and I would not be able to get back until Tuesday. So I had asked her to consider maybe, if possible, moving it to, um, another date, which is the first week, which is, is not, uh, option. But, um, maybe from Monday to Tuesday. Um, my plane is supposed to be here at four-thirty. I'll try, I'll be here by five. And if not, um, then I do a telecom, uh, conference from, uh, Texas on Monday night. So whatever the option that pleases is best for the board.
Thank you. So, um, this being part of our budget being, I mean, it's an important meeting and not one that Ms. DeFer felt like that she could miss. And we try to make all our board meetings, all the board members do. So the way I see it, we have two options, and I'll let Ms. Roundtree weigh in. I think she had her mic down, and the rest of you can. We can either move our meeting till Tuesday, which is, there's pros and cons both ways. But that makes it sometimes hard for staff to get information if we request it back before the voting meeting on Wednesday. Or we can do the Skyping with Ms. DeFer on Monday. Are you free to Skype that evening with your other responsibilities that?
I, I hopefully would be done by, I missed time for the board meeting, so.
Okay.
If not, I'll just have to tell them, I have to go take care of business.
So anyway, I didn't want to unilaterally make that decision. So I thought it was important that the board weigh in, and I'll hear Ms. Roundtree, and then I'll go to Ms. Hill and any other board member that want to.
Thank you, Madam.
Share.
And thank you for doing that extra duty for us, NSBA Gloria. I have a conflict that Tuesday night, so I wouldn't be able to be at a board meeting that night. But I think, um, in the broader picture and discussion, um, as Madam Chair mentioned, I think meeting on Monday and having a day if we have questions for the staff to answer to get us additional information is certainly important just at our regular meetings, but considering we're voting on the budget. I know sometimes, having had to Skype into meetings, sometimes the technology can be a little, a little glitchy, but, um, I mean, if you're able, I think that sounds like a good option, but of course, I'll leave it to the will of the board, thank you.
Ms. Hill, and then we'll come back to you, Ms. Fugit.
And certainly the will of the board, but I cannot, absolutely cannot be there on that Tuesday night either.
Okay, Ms. Fugit?
Well, I was going to say, I think the point is, all board members need to be around for this important, uh, discussion, and I understand moving it to Tuesday. I hate that our meetings got moved to the second week because of the first week, it wouldn't be an issue. I assume, Law Director, that, um, if this is a workshop, the way I understand the law, someone can participate in a workshop, um, period via Skype. It is only a voting meeting where it must be for work or emergency medical situations. So, there, I, I see no reason why she could not participate, and we will just have to be, I too have participated at Skype when I was at a Girl Scout national meeting, and it's hard to get people's attention, but you just have to shout out on, and say, "Hey, I want to ask a question."
Roundtree is very good at, so he's looking.
We do, we're just going, "Look at me," but, um...
We'll send you with like a little, a card or a shaker.
Yeah. So, I don't think that violates any kind of rules, so I, I think that would be fine. I would prefer if we could move it, but if two other people can't be there, then we're back to square one, so... She can be here for the voting meeting.
If I may, um, okay, so I'm looking at, uh, policy B one sixty, which is, which is what you're referencing, Ms. Fugit, and it, I mean, it talks about scheduled board meetings, that's what it talks about. But, but, I mean, the way I read the policy, uh, this would certainly qualify as a, as, as a reason for Ms. Dethridge to, uh, participate by Skype, so...
So, we can't vote, but I'm getting a shake of heads, it's all okay if she participates by Skype, okay.
Okay. I just wanted more input than just the decision falling on me, but, uh, Jennifer, did you want to comment?
I'm, I'm just thinking about the, the potential for flights to be on time.
Right.
Should we look at the next week? I mean, there's...
The budget, the budget has to be voted on by both.
Okay, never mind.
We're on a tight one here. Thank you, but yeah, I don't think we can do that. Okay, we'll start over here with Mr. McMillan, if there's anything else this board forum you want to share, Ms. Hill?
Congratulations to, uh, Harden Valley Academy's, uh, Foundation. They had a wonderful first-time tenure celebration, um, on Saturday night. I, I don't know the bottom line on how much money they raised on that, but it was wonderfully successful, and there were some foundation folks and PTA folks that worked themselves to death. So, thank you, I wanted to publicly thank you for that.
And Ms. Horn, Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At Mount Olive on Thursday is their Night of the Arts, and it's a wonderful event, and they did the, you'll have to look it up on YouTube, and I've shared it on social media, you can find it that way. But, um, the teachers and Dr. Cutter, um, the principal, if you've seen Jimmy Fallon do the school instruments, the instruments videos, um, the staff at the school did a video for a preview of La Bamba, so feel free to check that out, they did a great job.
Ms. Fugit?
No, I'm in bed by the time Jimmy Fallon is on, so I haven't seen that.
Mr. Norman?
Susan and I got an email today from, uh, Concerned Parent about technology being used, especially in lower grades, so I just wanted to give that to you, Bobby. Could we check out sometime, uh, if we have some, have had some discussions about options to opt out of technology in some way in the lower grades, some kind of pilot program possibly? But just, it's a discussion, it's an item for discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Owen.
Earlier this week, Ms. Dethridge and I got to serve as interviewers for Project Grad's Hands on the Future Paid Internship mock interviews at Mississippi Spagnolia Campus. I'm going to get to you. And, um, the day before the, the day before the mock interview, I found out that they were short some interviewers, and that they had a, a large number of female interviewers and not a lot of male interviewers. So, I sent an email to, um, several gentlemen and asked if they could possibly take some time to go to Mississippi very last minute, and Mr. Norman was able to go and participate in those interviews, and Joe Snyder from our finance department was able to go and participate in those interviews. And so, I'd like to thank them for doing that, so very last minute. I know the students appreciated it, and we heard some really phenomenal interviews, and I'll, I'll let Ms. Dethridge talk more about that.
Thank you, I, I agree with, um, Jennifer. It was good to, um, to sit there and have mock interviews with these, uh, outstanding high school students and help prepare them, so when they do go have their interviews for internship, they'll feel a little bit more comfortable, and hopefully, what we said and did will help them feel more, uh, be better prepared, but it was exciting and interesting. We have some highly intelligent kids out there, so, in Project Grad, and, and they did an outstanding job. I just want to thank them for allowing us the opportunity to work with them. And I also want to congratulate AE Robotics that participated in this weekend at, um, Stokely. They did an outstanding job, and I want to thank them for, I see Ms. Becker out there who is headed, headed that up, and you're doing a great job, keep up the good work, and just want to say kudos to them.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Becca, all in favor?
Aye.